Think whenever you're ready.
Okay, all right, so let's go ahead and I'll call the meeting to order. Brian, would you mind doing roll call, please?
Commissioner Ryan?
Yep.
Commissioner Crand?
Present.
Commissioner Faraday?
Present.
Commissioner Tunnel?
Here.
Commissioner Thompson? Not here. Just trying to do this from memory. Commissioner Clements, present. Thank you.
All righty, and we have a slew of meeting minutes to approve. So, we have minutes for March 2nd, April 6th, May 4th, and June 1st. Are there any issues with those minutes? Otherwise, I can entertain a motion.
I move that we approve the previous four months' meeting minutes.
I'll second.
Okay, it has been moved and seconded to approve meetings, meeting minutes for March 2nd, April 6th, May 4th, and June 1st. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, meeting minutes have been approved. We have one item on our pre-application agenda, and that is at 451 Timbercrest Loop, Steve Durrell for Berlum Development. You with us?
He sent an email this morning requesting to move the meeting back a week, which was an interesting call. So I'm not sure if he's online, or if he just could not attend.
Okay. I'm not hearing anybody. Star. If you are on the phone, this is so weird doing this from here now. If you are on the phone and you need to speak, just as a public service announcement, you have to hit star six? Star nine? No, it doesn't miss. Star six. So star six, you have to hit on your keypad to unmute yourself, and it can take a few moments for your voice to come through. So, just so you're aware, there's a little delay when you're trying to unmute yourself. So, the last call for 451 Timbercrest Loop, that pre-application. Okay, I think we'll just move on to the consent agenda. And consent agenda contains Cena Kraut 2104 at 1005 Caitlin Loop, Record of Survey 2106 TBD Rio Vista Boulevard, Record of Survey 2107 1940 Warren Wagon Road, and Record of Survey 2109 TBD Spruce Street. All of those items are within the consent agenda, and with a motion, we can approve that agenda. However, if anyone would like to speak on any of those items specifically, we can pull and discuss.
Commissioner Faraday?
Yes.
I did receive some comment, just that somebody stopped in the office today to discuss Record Survey 2106. I don't see them here, but just in case anybody from the public gets...
Okay. Okay. Any requests for discussion on any of these items?
I make a motion, will you approve the consent agenda?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, consent agenda has been approved. All right, we'll move on to old business. Design Review 2043 at 529 Lenora Street. Damon Beard for Steve and Sonia Blasick. Are you with us, Damon, or the Blasick?
Yes, we're here.
Welcome. I believe we left you last time needing a little bit more specific information about engineering things, and can you kind of give us an update about where we are?
Sure, we've had our civil engineer do some exhibits that he shared with Morgan in engineering, and while there's been some other questions that have come up as we worked through that, our engineer is confident that it's all things we can work through as we go into design development and develop our construction documents. I'm not sure if Morgan's online and has any additional questions or would like to speak to that any further.
Yeah, I'm here. Morgan Stroud in engineering. We did receive some preliminary grading plans and stormwater plans, and it seems like it'll, it looks like it'll work, but there's still some final design, design items that need to be figured out. But the idea seems sound, okay, like it'll work.
Brian, do you have anything to update from last time?
No, the majority of the stuff was engineering. One thing that we wanted to make sure to bring to your guys' attention was that they are proposing to utilize the plaza area and exclude the garage from the living space in their calculation to be at least 50% commercial in the CBD zone. And so, it is up to your guys' interpretation whether that is a valid reading of the code.
You call it the plan that shows the...
Yeah, I don't understand what you just said.
The garage, right?
It's one...
The garage is residential, the plaza is residential.
Right.
The plaza.
It's like the area between it.
Oh, yeah.
That middle place.
Yeah.
This is kind of pentagonal, area is commercial. It's roughly 1,000 square feet. 2,000 square feet of home and living space between that and the storage space. It's on the second floor. And then, this garage area, I believe is about 5, 6, 100 square feet. They're proposing to exclude that from the calculation, include this entire plaza area, maybe some seating or outdoor retail space of some sort for their undetermined commercial space.
Hey, Brian, can I address that real quick?
Yes.
So, the outdoor plaza space that we were referring to is the kind of the paved area on the site plan that would be out in front of the commercial. It was out to the sidewalk, not necessarily the parking area. It's kind of in this U-shaped area between commercial and the garage. Do you have a site plan you could bring up?
There you go. This hashed area.
There you go, right there, yep.
Okay.
Is exterior area considered commercial space in the code? Related to that? Kind of have to be building space?
By definition would be no.
But you're definitely, it'd have to be building space if the open space is not considered the commercial space. But what's the percentages, what's the change? And where the hell, how many...
It's almost exactly 50/50 if they don't count the garage and do count the outdoor commercial space.
I mean, the unusable space majority of the year.
Yeah.
So...
I remember how much space do they require to have? Commercial versus residential? At least 50 half of the ground floor area is commercial, yeah.
So without that, they're not going to be, what, 25%?
It's about 2/3rd, 1/3rd.
Okay, 2/3rd. I don't know if we can start setting that precedence.
Commission, this is, this is Michelle Grunavell, your Community and Economic Development Director. Just to give you a little bit of history on this code, it was put in place in 2006 specifically to require mixed-use buildings within our downtown core. At that time, we were losing a lot of our commercially-zoned properties to strictly residential projects, and so that's why that provision is in your code. So, in the past, we've really considered it in terms of not really the use of the property and more of the building itself, but the code is a little open-ended, so it is up for interpretation. But I just wanted to give you a little bit of that history, just for some context.
So, this is Commissioner Tunnel. So what about the code makes it open-ended, open for discussion?
Well, it doesn't specifically say building footprint. And, and so, I think that's where there is a little bit of discretion in the application of it. You know, I think that there's probably different reads on it depending on who's looking at it. You know, Diane Kushlin, our interim city planner, was considering some of these other spaces in the whole proposal, whereas I think probably staff that's been around a little bit longer, you know, we generally, when I saw it, I said, oh, this doesn't meet the code because I was looking at the building footprint, the usage within the building footprints. So we wanted to give you guys the option of, if you wanted to be involved in kind of that, more of that policy decision, I think, I think you have that discretion.
If you'd like, I can read the code section out for you guys.
Yeah, that'd be good, no.
This is 3.4.04C. Residential uses, including single-family, multifamily, and local housing, are allowed as part of a mixed-use development, including commercial and/or public uses within the CBD and CC zones under the following conditions. In a multi-story structure, commercial space and/or public uses are provided at the street level with residential space above or below. In a development with commercial and/or public-use building facing the primary street, residential units are located to the rear or side. In each case, a proposal will be expected to provide at least 50% ground-floor area in commercial and/or public uses, or in the CC zone and equivalent square footage of deed-restricted local housing.
So, this is Commissioner Tunnel again. So, when it was originally presented, the intended use of the outdoor space next to the commercial space was what? What was that described as the intended use?
We didn't necessarily define it as we don't have a specific use for the commercial at this time, but as we worked with it, through it, through it with Diane, it was noted that we were farther off the property line than we should be for a commercial use, and so an outdoor-public space would allow us to keep the commercial use farther off the property line than is specifically noted in the code.
So, an outdoor-public space is not defined as commercial space?
Well, you don't know. I mean, it could be seating, it could be, you know, tables and chairs. We just don't know at this point.
To me, the code, I mean, when it's talking square footage, your square footage of the building. You could use any outside and make, okay, it's public, and now we don't have to do hardly any square footage of the building if you took it in that sense, as far as it's the outside area. So, I think the code was pretty clear. I mean, it's referencing building space, not outside space, to me.
It is referencing building space. That was the intention for the structure of that language.
Because otherwise, you can put something small on a whole big patio and call it space and not have to do any commercial space. If it equaled out.
Well, technically, put it on piers, and it all becomes commercial space if what's under the piers is open space.
Yeah, yeah, well, yeah.
And that's, that's an exaggeration, but it's a possibility.
Chairman and Board, this is Bill Punkinney, the attorney for the city. Can I provide a little input?
Please.
Yes.
Yeah, so, as I understand it, and I'm coming at this just about as cold as you are, the concern is in C3, is that right, Brian?
Yes.
So it says, "In each case, a proposal will be expected to provide at least 50% ground-floor area in commercial and/or public uses." So, a patio, the question is, is a patio ground floor? Brian, does that put a fine enough point on it, do you think?
Yes, that is the question we were trying to answer.
Okay. So, I think when you look at something like this, if it's ambiguous, you'd use the plain language of the ordinance to understand it. And so, is a patio part of a ground floor? Typically, I would say no. But again, that's up to the commission. And so that's your decision point. Is a patio area the part of the ground floor or not? If it's not, you know, obviously, then I don't think we meet the requirements of the code. And if you determine that it is, then it would meet the requirements of the code in this regard.
I personally don't see outside being ground floor.
I agree.
Well, yeah, and if you carry that over to any building permit, when you make an application for ground-floor structure, a patio is exterior.
Also, it can...
In fact, it can, it can work into easements and all sorts of things and not qualify it in the setback.
And I think as we worked through it with Diane, you know, because of the difficulty of the site configuration and the, in addition to the slope, that's where we both come to the conclusion that we could, we could get through with this interpretation.
Sets a precedence that I'm not willing to...
It does.
It says ground floor, so if something would have to be changed in the ordinance to include a patio area, because patio area is not ground floor square footage in anything I've ever worked with.
No. I agree.
The intent is having the building match up for residential-commercial.
That's why the code was written. That was the intent.
Okay, so it sounds like, you know, the patio is not ground floor in this group.
Yeah.
Not ground floor is defined.
Yeah.
Not ground floor is defined in the code.
Right.
The follow-up would be how to remedy this code. Correct invalidity. Speaking with the applicant, and he could probably speak to this a little closer, but there are options that he may be able to expand the commercial space a little bit. So, condition, I'll provide a site plan. But I'll let him.
Yeah, is there a way to get it down to code?
Yeah, I think.
Or you'd have to file for a variance.
Or, as Brian and I talked a little bit about this late last week, we're under the impression that if we need to add a little bit of commercial square footage, we can do that. And without major modifications to the exterior elevations or the site plan.
Okay, I think that it's sounding like that is probably the route the commission would prefer to see you go, just because the written code that we're sort of following and being guided by is, everyone's feeling like the patio is not sufficient to meet those requirements. So I think focusing on expanding that commercial space is probably your best option.
Madam Chair and Commissioners, this is Steve Blasick. Yeah, we're, we're more than happy to go that extra step. If, if we could get kind of a approval and make that a contingency, that we meet that square footage requirement, that would help us at least get to the next step and make those minor modifications so that we'd have the correct square footage for you.
Is everyone comfortable with that, moving forward? Allowing them to move forward with conditions that the commercial space will...
I'd be comfortable so long as it was actually enclosed commercial space as defined by the code.
Sure, building, commercials.
Yeah, structure.
Yeah.
We can do that.
And does the commission get to review this again?
It's not, I mean, it's sounding like they'd prefer to move forward without another noticed meeting is what it's like.
That's correct.
Yeah, that would, Madam Chair, that would be helpful. We've been kind of working on this for like nine months now. And, yeah, if we could at least move forward subject to that, then we know we can make the changes, and of course, we wouldn't get any approvals or final building permit or anything to the next step until we had that requirement, and make sure that Brian and everybody else was satisfied with it.
Are you comfortable with that, Brian? Is he for, okay? Is anyone else, is anyone in opposition to that idea? But staff will review, okay? Okay, any other points of discussion on this one? Ready for a motion?
It's a public hearing.
Oh, it is a public hearing from last time, thank you. So we have a continued public hearing open, thank you for the reminder. So if you would like to comment on this project, now is the time to do so. And if you are on the phone and you need to speak, you need to unmute yourself and hit star six. There's a little bit of a delay when you're coming off mute, so it might take a minute for us to hear you. But I am ready and waiting for anyone who'd like to speak about Design Review 2043 at 529 Lenora Street.
Wait, can I hear the meeting? Hello?
Would you like to comment?
There's a lot of people on the actual phone who are not muted.
Okay.
Might just be hearing.
Okay. Okay, last call for public comment on Design Review 2043 at 529 Lenora Street. Brian, have we received any written comments?
No.
Okay, I'm not hearing anybody, so I will go ahead and close the public hearing. And now, Commission, is there any further discussion? Or are you comfortable moving forward?
Yeah.
I wouldn't mind hearing just one more time to verify with what we got here. If you can go over the conditions of approval, because I don't, I already have them up on there so we can read them.
Yep.
Just to see if there's anything else that...
Yeah, yeah.
Final engineering approval, proof of sewer connection permits, international fire code, location of required bicycle parking spaces, exterior lighting, and service areas. Details of lighting fixtures and design materials of service area enclosure, snow storage areas shall be verified to ensure they are adequate, and runoff can be adequately conveyed. Applicants shall consult the city arborist and identify trees within the Lenora Street right-of-way that may be in conflict with site design, determine if there are any possible modifications to design to reduce the conflicts, and install tree protection measures. Recede all disturbed areas with weed-free native grass or wild car mix, and then, Design Review will expire in one year.
I don't like much outside, anything else? I make a motion that we approve Design Review 2043 with the added condition that applicant and staff work to come up to a plan that has the required 50/50 residential-commercial space within the structure of the building as an additional condition of approval.
Second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve Design Review 2043 at 529 Lenora Street with conditions as stated with the additional condition on the square footage. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, on to new business, starting with Record of Survey 2108 at 1430 Clements Road. Ken Baker of KRB Builders.
I'm going to recuse myself from that.
Okay.
As a client of mine.
Okay, thank you. Oh, hello, I'm sorry. Much to look at. Okay. If you would just like to state your name and address for the record, and then tell us about your...
Ken Baker, 163 Willow Springs Drive, Talent, Oregon 97540. My understanding, I'm not under consent agenda because Brian wanted to pull me out of consent agenda because Robert would have to recuse himself from the whole thing.
Got it.
So that's the reason I'm under new business. Everything's clean until I looked at the packet. So I'm going to ask to go backwards to go forwards. If you guys can look, bring up page 72 of your packet. This is a plot plan that you just approved under ROS 2109. So, I've got it as page 72 of the packet I received.
The number's got moved around a little bit.
It's the, Brian, it's the ROS survey for 2109.
21.
Oh, yes. That, is that it?
Yes.
All right, so if you bring that all the way and blow that up even more, if you can, the most right property has a width of 70.25 feet. And, your code is clear that the minimum width of a property has to be 75 feet. All right, you guys just approved this. I specifically asked Planning, Brian, before you were on board, if I could do that for my project, and I was told no. I was told that I had to hire a survey in order to, a surveyor in order to figure out how to do a flag lot. So that's what I was told. So now, Brian, if you can bring up mine ROS survey, I'm not sure what the page number is. That one right there, and blow that out. So, we created a 30-foot-wide flag lot on the rightmost portion, and two 75-foot wide lots, plus another front lot, and then we've got the 10,000 square feet, and we're fine with your code. What I want to do is what you guys just approved across the street, and I was told by Planning that I couldn't do. So what I have here for you are some drawings of what I would like you guys to include in this as an option. This is what I was told I couldn't do. Pretty much the same thing, one's just blown up a little bit.
Okay.
Pretty much the same thing that you just approved across the street from me, where I would be creating that last lot in the 16, it's a little over 69 feet. Actually, I think once the actual survey gets completed, it'll be 70 feet or something like that. And it would be pretty much exactly the same condition you approved across the street. We're still getting four lots. We're getting the 75-foot frontage along Spruce Street instead of Clements. We've got the 10,000 square feet everywhere, and... So I'm just asking that to be included as an option for subdividing that property. so I'm just asking that to be included as an option for subdividing that property. Since I was told I couldn't do it and you just approved it across the street.
The reasoning for the approval on the Spur Street, uh, R O S twenty-one oh nine, is that they are required to construct a hammerhead turnaround at the intersection of Spruce and Clements. Which would be the same hammerhead I would need.
Exactly. That is very true.
For fire. Yes, and just for general purposes. And so that wraparound gets them above that seventy-five foot threshold on the hammerhead. State's preference would be to have fewer flag lots in town than more. Um, so I'm fine with that. I'm not super comfortable with approving things on the fly without even having a copy myself. Um, so my request would be to continue it to next month.
I'm going to ask that you please don't do that. I received the packet on Friday. I le, I was leaving on, I had family in town. And I left town on the Fourth of July to get here. And I did not, uh, Brian, sorry, have a chance to even get to you on this. Uh, by the time I got the packet and looked at it, we were too late in the game.
Understood.
And, and so like you just made it a condition of approval on the previous action item. Just make this a condition of, a potential condition of approval moving forward. I've been speak, Greco was sitting right here for across the street. We're going to meet out at the project. We're trying to get our engineers to work together, Morgan. So we can get Spruce and Clements to what you need for the hammerhead and grade and everything. And if you slow this down a month, then it just, it just makes everything that much harder.
Commissioners, Fox.
This is Commissioner Tunnel. I, I don't have the advantage of seeing what happened across the street or across the way, but uh, it seems to me that it would be appropriate for us to consider a condition, a condition of approval, uh, that would allow them to move forward to get, uh, all the details in place and try to stay on schedule.
Anyone uncomfortable with that? It does seem this configuration is definitely cleaner. I mean.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with that. It's, the flag lot thing is is odd.
Yeah, Brian, this was about the first question I asked of the planning department. And the first response was, no, you can't do it. And so I said, "Flag lot?" And they said, "Yeah, that'd be cleaner." I don't like this. I don't think you guys like it.
Commission, this is Michelle Grunavell, um, Community and Economic Development Director. I also, um, don't have the ability to see what you're looking at, but I just wanted to remind the commission, there's, um, essentially criteria that have to be met in order to approve a record of survey. And one, is it eligible for a record of survey? And does it meet the dimensional standards are kind of the main criteria for the record of survey? So that's just something to consider when you're reviewing it. Um, I think if you do decide to make any sort of approval tonight without it going through, kind of the appropriate staff and agency review, um, you just are going to want to be really clear that, um, that approval would be based on satisfaction of, um, all the necessary dimensional requirements and engineering requirements.
Specifically, one of the things that we absolutely cannot waive on record of survey is preparation and recording of record of survey pursuant to Idaho code. Meaning it has to be done by a licensed surveyor. So just make sure that that is included.
Okay, how do we want to move forward?
Anyone understand how, how this has anything to do with the record of survey across the street on Spruce? How we get from what happened on Spruce and how the owner of the Spruce property can possibly help this property?
You want me to try and explain that?
Briefly?
So neither property is three hundred feet wide. So to get seventy-five foot, three, four seventy-five foot lots, you need three hundred feet. They're both, let's say, two hundred and ninety-five feet. So R O S, uh, I'm sorry, uh, the one for Spruce went seventy-five, 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 seventy point two five. And they, they, they got their, they got their width by taking the seventy-five foot width off of, off of Clements instead of off of Spruce. So they turned the property and got their width that way. And I'm asking to do exactly the same thing. Three, three properties at seventy-five feet off of, um, Clements. One off of Spruce, that, that the two of us together are building Spruce and Clements and putting a hammerhead together. My engineers talking to their engineer. I was told I couldn't do it. They gotta do it.
Morgan, do you have any insight on this application? From an engineering perspective or a street perspective?
Um, regarding the turnaround? Or?
Yeah, just regarding, regarding the access issue.
Sure. Um, so currently, I don't know if that's, is that showing on the screen right now?
Yes.
Okay. So currently, these, both of these properties, the fourteen thirty Clements and the TBD Spruce that was in the consent agenda, they don't have access, paved access to the roadways or utilities. Um, they're lacking a lot of basic infrastructure. So with these projects, they're required to build the roadways up to their properties and extend those utility lines. And there's a large mountain or hill at the very end where Spruce and Clements meet. Um, so they're working together, it sounds like, Ken, and the past, the other applicant to figure out how to make the grades work. Um, and part of that, individually, they're required to provide turnarounds at the end of that intersection. So it's not just a dead-end street that no one can turn around in and meet fire access requirements. So they're working together, basically, it sounds like, to help lower some of those costs. Um, and to be able to provide that turnaround.
Which would make the applicant's lot four, its address would be Spruce, not Clements.
Is that correct? Uh, I guess technically that is correct.
That's what you're trying to.
What, what address it has isn't necessary.
I just want to make sure I comprehend that right.
Yes, that would then be the width of the lot. It would be the front.
Right.
Yeah. That's simple. Which is what they did. What they did is they've got one, two, three lots, and then over here, that's the only way they could get their seventy-five foot there because they didn't have it there. So I'm looking at one, two, three, and there's my seventy-five. They developed this. I developed this. There's a hammerhead turnaround.
That explains your.
And we're done.
Yep. Okay.
Bill Punkinny, do you have anything to add to this application? I think this is a little unusual.
I should say.
Yeah, I mean, I think that, um, you know, we certainly don't want to hold anybody up, but by the same token, it's important that we comply with the code. And so, um, if the commission is inclined to move forward, I think we want to be very careful about how we draft the findings and conclusions. Specifically that, you know, our requirements for this kind of record of survey are met. In terms of dimensions and also access and access to utilities. I mean, that's it. That's my perspective. I mean, if there's more specific questions, I'm happy to chime in.
Brian's caught in a hard spot here. He wasn't the one who gave me the direction. And, um, it wasn't Michelle Grunavell either. It was another person. And based on that information, I moved forward. So you can imagine how surprised I was when I opened this packet up on Friday.
Okay, commission. What are we, what are, where are we at? On moving forward?
I'm comfortable with lot four. For sake of reference, having a Spruce Street address, so long as the legal over and unders can be handled with regard to code and the agreement with a neighboring, uh, applicant is acceptable to city for a hammerhead turnaround. That qualifies for, um, required access, for whatever reason, emergency vehicles or general turnaround.
Yeah, and then just add the, the requirement of a record of survey of the changes to the, to the desire, to the plat, plan.
Correct.
And it seems to me we'd have uh, a condition that, uh, the city then could make sure everything is met and move forward and the, and the contractor developer can move forward.
And I'm a hundred percent fine with that.
Not sure I could put that in a motion, but.
That, that's what I'm thinking, Scott, is how in the world would put that into a motion? That's a like four paragraph motion. Are you allowed to include that piece of paper in your motion?
The piece of paper really isn't relevant. It's the dimension of the lot, I think speaks for itself. I mean, you're, you're a hundred and forty-seven across what would be the new front.
Correct.
Yeah. So that's pretty clear. Um, Brian, you have any?
So how, yeah.
Motion structure ideas and how, what we include, exclude something important.
Right. This is a little unusual because we are being asked to on the fly choose between two valid design, site designs.
Make, not choose between, just make it an additional option. Right. I'm, I'm not trying to invalidate the initial option. I'm trying to make it cleaner for you. That one's approved. I'm asking you to allow this to be considered as an option when the new survey is turned in with engineering. Assuming it meets those criteria, then we move forward with it.
Commission, I just, uh, this is Bill Punkinny again. Um, if I could pipe in and, you know, sometimes I get to be the bad guy too. We do our very best to respect, um, the time and resources of applicants, but sometimes it also pays to measure twice and cut once. And so, you know, under the circumstances where we're being hit with, for whatever reason, and I understand that, you know, look, because of the resources at the city are what they are, um, sometimes this sort of thing happens. You know, when, when we're hit with something that, you know, makes it into the packet just up to the deadline, staff hasn't had a chance to review it. Sometimes it pays to allow staff time to review and provide you with findings and conclusions that appropriately, appropriately address the requirements of the site as well as our code. So I, I would say just weigh that as you're moving forward. And I know the applicant probably really doesn't want to hear that, and I hate to be the bearer of bad news, but, but weigh that as you move forward because it seems like we're really straining here. Um, and, uh, sometimes, like I said, it's better to measure twice and cut once.
If I may add, the last one, you guys were going in through a pretty tight interpretation of code. And you allowed that option to be included in your moving forward on the last, uh, agenda item. I think this one's a lot cleaner than that. I'm a former councilman. I've sat through these kinds of things before. This one's pretty clean.
Um, I think we're going to discuss, so I'll have you take a seat again. And, um, thank you very much.
Okay. If, if we take advice of council. Is there much of a time lag with what the applicant needs to provide to the city? The city needs to do for its research to determine if what the applicant is proposing will be approved. Versus if we approve it, subject to the city going through the exercise.
So you're saying it's probably going to be about this.
Because the city, and you can, Brian, can you be part of our discussion? You have whatever time it takes you to get from the applicant, what the applicant is proposing to do. Run it through engineering. Make sure it's acceptable with the, uh, applicant across the street. And that takes a certain amount of time.
Right.
So is that amount of time greater? And then we just have a yes or no next meeting? Or do we come up with half a dozen criterion subject twos on an approval? Because you still have to go through the same exercise. Does it make any difference in, in the bigger scheme of things in terms of time? So I'm sure the applicant isn't going to proceed with doing it this way without getting approval from you if we make it subject to approval.
Right. I believe the applicant is wanting to get going on construction of things before the fall is the big rush and without a planning approval, you cannot do that.
Right.
But like you said, it's, things take time and it's, I really don't anticipate adding a ton of time if we, we move it.
Follow process, basically.
Okay. Any suggestions, Commissioner Pran?
I'm just trying to think about all those conditions of approval. So I think in the end, from what I'm, what I'm going to guess, even if we do to the next, I'm sure we're going to approve it. So like how much, like you said, how much time are we going to be wasting? For either ours to, do we want to address it again next meeting? Do it itself? Present it again for I mean, I have, I don't have any issues with the layout as we proposed. I just want to make sure it's to code. What the conditions of approvals are met. We don't skip on that part.
I agree with that. I just, um, advice from council was.
And I would also be comfortable with distributing out the napkin sketch, sort of informal plan he's presented for comment from engineering fire, et cetera, and conditioning out a surveyor version prior to. Sounds like they challenge finding a surveyor at the moment. That would, may slow down the process.
So it requires a, another survey regardless, right?
Right.
Yes. What do you think, Scott?
I'm inclined to, to move, move forward today if we can get the language correct. And, um, the, it seems to me that what we're looking for is to approve this with the condition that uh, one of the, uh, of the four lots would front on Spruce. And all engineering, uh, that would normally take place must be approved. And a record of survey must be obtained before the applicant can, uh, proceed. I don't know if that includes everything that we need to include. If it does, I'd make that a motion.
I'm agreeable to that list. Um, Brian, did, did Scott cover in those three topics? Did he sc, did he cover what would be involved in the process? To the full extent? Okay.
Yeah, then I'll make that motion.
And I'll second that motion.
Um, would you mind repeating the conditions just so that we've got it like clear?
Yeah, so I recommend that we approve, and I'm sorry, I don't have the number in front of me, but we approve.
Record of survey 2108.
Yeah, approve record of survey 2108 with the condition of having, of changing to have one lot front on Spruce, and also have engineering approved, be, everything supplied to engineering for approval, and a new record of survey be obtained prior to the project moving forward.
Okay, second that again.
Okay. It has been moved and seconded to approve record of survey 2108 with the stated conditions and adjustments to the plan. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Opposed? Okay, motion passed.
Thank you.
Thanks.
I didn't mean to throw that in your lap like that.
Did you miss me?
Who are you?
All right. So we'll move on to conditional use permit 2101, designer view 2113 at 428 Colorado Street. Do we have the representative for this application?
We are here.
Okay. If you can just state your name and address for the record, and then just tell us about your project.
Richard Stratton, also Laura Forsyth with RLC Holdings for the 428 Colorado Street.
So we're interested, this is Todd. Thank you all. We're interested in doing a 30 units, there are 15 duplexes. I think you guys are looking for the site plan, I'm hoping.
Yes.
So we purchased the property. Our goal is to provide some housing in McCall. We were familiar with rentals, multi-family. We do that where we live in Vancouver, Washington. So we have decided to do 15 duplexes with garages. They are about 1,400 square feet each, three bedroom, two and a half bath. So that's, we provided a sketch here for you guys, and we've hired HECO Engineering to do our preliminary engineering for the project. 15 of the units will be deed restricted to help with the workforce housing in McCall as well.
I'm sorry, was that 15?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, we spoke with the city. We were looking to possibly do a spot rezone, and after discussing with them, we decided to go with the density bonus and deed restrict 15 of the units.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Brian, would you like to kind of go over staff side?
All right. All right. So as the applicant said, they're proposing to do 15 duplex units, 30 units in total on a 3.8 acre lot. It's owned R4, so theoretically, they would only have 15 units. They're choosing to pursue the deed restriction, restricted housing density bonus to provide local housing for workers or people over 65 or people with disability. At 428 Colorado Street. Near the intersection of Sampson Trail in Colorado. It is relatively close to the downtown core. Zoned R4, future land use map. Also zone, or low density residential matches the proposed zoning. The current site topography, see it has a little bit of a knob in the center and gently slopes up towards the middle. There are a lot of trees on site, which brings us into a lot of the site concerns with the design of, staff's concerns with the site design. First off, the grading. If you look at the areas adjacent to Colorado Street and the rear of the lot, and on the western property boundary of the portion that back out to Colorado Street, there's a lot of steep slope grading and retaining walls being proposed there. We're having doubts that they'll be able to do that without encroaching significantly onto the neighbors' properties during construction. It also creates a blank facade, blank wall along Colorado Street, which decreases the quality of the pedestrian experience. Retaining walls are within setback. They have provided a narrative today, I don't know if you guys saw, saying that nothing would be above 30 inches, which would meet code. It's still for staff's preference not to have those retaining walls located up against Colorado Street for the purposes of preventing a blank facade. They are, again, proposing to remove 469 trees as of their latest treaty removal on retention plan, which probably needs to be revised since they are now proposing to use retaining walls adjacent to Colorado Street where a majority of the trees proposed to remain are currently located. The site design, as you can see, with the buildings on there is all very uniform and organized and orderly, which would indicate that they have not put a lot of thought into building around or through trees, adjacent to trees or site topography. They're generally planning on leveling out the interior of the site and placing the homes. The homes, the duplexes, the six dwelling units adjacent to Colorado Street, they are proposing to have them faced forward internally as opposed to externally. Their justification for this is that it is a private street, and they are entitled to choose which frontage they want to do that on. If they are to consider the internal drive aisles as private streets, they need to go back and do a lot of revisions to their work because we have not reviewed them as such. We have reviewed them as an internal drive aisle. And no question about 9.605. They also are required to do a traffic impact study per their engineering review letter, which they have scheduled but have not completed. We don't know the outcome of that because we don't know the contents of it. And it may lead to a left turn lane at the corner of 55 and Colorado Street. ITD has said that it does not meet their threshold for traffic study, but we have different standards. We have different needs. So what we're asking you to do tonight is to see if this meets the findings of a conditional use permit. Number one, it is a conditional use authorized and zone involved. It is, per the land use code. It is harmonious in accord with the general objectives and any specific objectives of the comprehensive plan and/or this title. Generally speaking, it is. It is providing local housing for at least half the units. The specific bit of that is a little more hazy. If they do all of the conditions of approval we have requested of them, then yes, they will be incompatible. Be designed, constructed, and operated, operated and maintained to be harmonious and appropriate in appearance with the existing or likely character of the neighborhood, and that such use will not change the essential character of the surrounding area. Again, if they call all conditions of approval, will likely do that. The conditions of approval do, however, include a lot of things that will likely trigger significant modifications to their site plan. Not be detrimental to the health, safety, and general welfare of persons residing or working in the neighborhood of such proposed use, if all conditions of approval are met. Not cause any substantially harmful environmental consequences to any land or waters within the planning jurisdiction. They are proposing to clear cut the site, basically, so I am terribly comfortable making that finding.
You know, this is Mac Miners. We're not proposing to clear cut, you know.
Mr. Miners, if you could, if you could just hold off for a minute, we're just going to get through this presentation, and then we will give you an.
It's not true. Okay, but it is not true.
Not be excessive additional public cost for public facilities and service, and will not be detrimental to the economic welfare of the community. As I have said, this may provide some positive economic benefits as it is providing local workforce housing. Be adequately served by essential public facilities and services, including highways, streets, police, and fire protection, drainage structures, refuse disposal, water, and sewer, and schools. The applicant may be required as a condition of approval to mitigate any deficient public service. The site is located within downtown core. It is relatively easier to serve than many locations in the area. This is a positive. Not involve uses, activities, processes, materials, equipment, or condition of operations that will cause unreasonable production of traffic, noise, smoke, fumes, glare, odors, or other forms of pollution. None of that is proposed. There is a traffic study required that, to discuss potential traffic. Have vehicular approaches to the property so designed as not to create a detrimental interface interference with traffic on surrounding public or private thoroughfares, or adversely affect the pedestrian environment. Staff's opinion that the pedestrian environment will be negatively impacted because it is removing trees, adding blank facades, creating tall imposing structures adjacent to Colorado Street that are not appealing or facing outward into the community. Not result in the destruction, loss, or damage of an important natural, scenic, or historic feature. The applicant is proposing to remove a lot of existing natural features, including trees and topography. Be on a sufficient size to accommodate proposed use, including yards, open spaces, snow storage walls, fences, parking areas, loading zones, and design standards applicable. There is adequate space on the lot to do all of this. Have minimal negative economic impact on the neighborhood or surrounding community. Staff does not believe that will occur. And then on to the design review findings you're asking. Same as first, CP finding is generally in performance with comprehensive and city code. It is, the project does not jeopardize the health, safety, or welfare of the public if all conditions are met. Project conforms to applicable requirements of the zoning ordinance and subdivision ordinances as enumerated in section 3.1601 of this chapter. Generally believe it. With, if, with conditions meets those requirements. Project will have no substantial impact on adjacent properties or on the community at large. The property, project is proposing to do a lot of grading specifically near the edges of the site, which is most likely going to have impacts on the neighboring properties, particularly during construction. Then there's. One more thing that Delta was gone last week while I was writing the staff report, and so I wanted to clarify the language of condition approval number seven regarding the retention walls adjacent to Colorado Street. If the commission approves them, requesting that use this language regarding the installation of public art to remedy the blank wall issues. Prior conditions of building permit, the applicant shall provide a revised grading plan identifying the heights of all retaining. Any wall over 30 inches shall not be located within any required setback area. If a retaining wall located adjacent to Colorado Street is included in the revised plan, the applicant shall include and install a public art amenity located on or within the terrace area. Proposals for artist selection and design of the public art amenity shall be reviewed and approved by the City of McCall Public Art Advisory Committee. That I will stand up for any questions.
Couple things.
I was just going to say, can you clarify what the density bonus?
Yes.
Yes.
So R4 zone on 3.8 acres, they are entitled to 15 dwelling units, four dwelling units, four acre times 3.88. If they agree to provide deed restricted low school housing units, they can up to double that amount with those deed restricted units.
So you're going to basically double your.
Right. If the additional units are providing.
In an unofficial way, it would be like an R8 property.
Yes.
It's a clever way of avoiding spots on it.
Yeah.
Call it what it is. No, that's what it is.
Yeah.
So Brian, do you guys have any experience yet or any proven method of enforcement for this deed restricted housing? Because this is a significant amount of deed restricted housing on the hill.
I'm going to go ahead and defer to Michelle on that.
I've asked her that question before.
Yeah, so what I will provide with you is we have these deed restrictions on these units. We have the ability to do random audits as well as annual audits to make sure there is compliance. So that's the way the program's set up now. As we get more units, we're obviously probably going to be dedicating more resources on the compliance side as well as further developing our housing program, too. So, but yeah, but the way it's set up is that we have the ability, if there's any questions of compliance, we can do random audits. And every year, we will be doing annual audits. And those are for sale units or for rental units. And I just wanted to remind the commission that our local housing deed restriction is for people to, who work for a McCall employer, which the area is defined as broader than the McCall area. And there's a map that shows that, which, sort of the geographic area in which the employment centers are located. It's also for people who are seniors or people with disabilities. It doesn't allow for any short term rentals. And then there is an appreciation cap for the, for the sale units, and then, and a, basically like a rent control, a percentage that's tied to CPI for rental units. The city currently does not set the base rate for these units. We're having the developer do that, but then, once they're in that program, they can't fluctuate largely like the market may. So, so that's what the deed restriction is. It's not an income qualification program. It basically requires the tenants or the owners or the buyers to meet that criteria. And then it does, it does sort of keep, keep it so that we don't, we don't see these units kind of move out of the realm of people being able to rent or buy in the future.
Have you had the opportunity yet to test the model, for example, having to ask someone to leave or evict someone, or force a sale of a deed restricted property that was out of compliance?
We haven't. I mean, this program is relatively new, and we currently. I mean, this program is relatively new and we currently have about ten deed restricted units in the program. And so because they, those deed restrictions have been approved within the last six months or so, we don't have any examples of going through audits or evictions or something like that. So, but I mean, this is not unusual. This is how other communities manage deed restrictions. Sometimes it's the local government, sometimes it's a housing authority. So this is the pretty typical way of managing housing programs. So we are not unique in that sense.
Thank you.
I've got a couple of things. One, I'm looking at item number five. I'm not comfortable with asking for a greenhouse admission project impact. I don't think we've ever had that. We've had multiple projects that have cleared out trees. And if you're just looking at trees, I mean, there's no water there. If you want to pull up the site plan, I mean, you got an old city dump on the east side of it, that I've looked through the entire report on that because I'm also on the housing committee working and we're trying to get incentives for developers and not create disincentives. Because if we create more disincentives, we're not going to get the housing. And so our committee has been working for a year, which is driving me nuts, but trying to come up with more incentives other than not only the density bonus and also the ten thousand dollars per unit for the deed restriction. But is there other ways we can streamline projects? I mean, there's lots of stuff, that's a whole separate discussion. But part of that, I mean, you know, the greenhouse thing, we've got to look at some of these items, are we going to inhibit the developer, the ability to build affordable, or not affordable deed restricted housing? One thing with this property, you can kind of see the actual right of way that they're doing, the retaining wall is, actually goes through a house on Colorado. The road is not built where the road is supposed to be built, it's not centered. And so it actually goes through that house right there, through their living room. And so the way the retaining wall is, is a good amount of distance between the actual built road and that. And it's pretty wooded and it kind of does slope up a little bit. I mean, I drive it basically every day. And so I don't see the need of putting public art right there. I think it's a total waste of money. It sets back, there's a good amount of trees there. I can see a terracing with some nice landscaping, but as far as public art, that's, doesn't make any sense to me in that.
Public art doesn't make sense to me.
Not in that location. Maybe other locations possibly, but that one, I mean, you've got a old trailer park across the street full of nineteen fifty trailer parks, but on part of it. So, but anyway, there is a big buffer between the road and where those retaining walls would be. And so flipping those houses there also would create three more accesses down into the road, therefore create even more problems because this access here, if you're familiar with it, you know, I drive it all the time. This goes up to a circle that ends, this goes down, it used to go out all the way to the high school or to middle school and stuff, but now they've closed the road down, it's that state eighty that's out there. But what you coming in at this direction, I mean, people just roll through the stop sign, I mean, just having more pulling out in the driveway there as a driveway is going to be dangerous.
The driveways would still be facing south. The front of the.
The front of the house.
The front door of the house would face north.
And that doesn't make any sense. But, okay, as long as they're not driveways there, I was thinking you wanted to flip out of buildings, but I mean, I don't know if it makes sense to have the front of the house where you can't access it anyway. You have to walk around from the front, the back to the front to get to your house. I don't know, that does, to me, doesn't make any sense if you're pulling up and your guests are going to pull up from that side. They got to walk all the way around the back of your house in essence to get your front door. But anyway. And so, like I say, and again, the area there, I mean, I'm very, very familiar with it. I used to live right next to it and have my, as a kid, ran over that with my tree forts and everything else inside there. So, I mean, it was inevitable, it's going to get developed, it's just a matter of where we're at with it. There's a few things on these requirements that really seem a little bit weird and, I mean, nobody likes to see the amount of trees that have to go or that could potentially go. But, I don't, I mean, we technically can't restrict certain properties from a building site to a point. I mean, we can ask for retreat, you know, additional trees to be planted, but when we do it on the lake, we're kind of stuck at certain points. If they're within certain building parameters, we can't just say, no, you can't put your house there, there's just a nice big tree there.
The replant that was suggested in the application by the applicant was significant.
Yeah.
Volume, in terms of volume.
Yeah. And so, yeah, I mean, there's going to be a lot of trees in there, but, I mean, if we don't do, we've got to give up some to get some housing. I mean, that right now is by far, in my opinion, the biggest issue McCall is dealing with right now. And I deal with it every single day. When people calling and looking for housing, people can't get jobs, or people can't get employees with housing. And I really feel strong that we've got to keep in mind, if we make it too cost prohibitive for developers, they won't build it. They're not going to just build it. I mean, so if we can revisit some of these, discuss it, discuss it with the applicant, maybe there's some modifications, we can limit some ideas of it. I mean, I've also looked at, you know, the area around the dump, if there's any potential site there to continue any development, and that's going to be down the road because of the studies on the dump and some of the other properties, you could show it, well, actually, it's not part of the application, so we can deal with that. But I just think some of these are getting a little too restrictive, and I'm not sure why some of them are in here.
This commissioner tunnel, I agree with you, Robert, and I had a question about the initial comment on the, the back of those three units, those townhouses being in Colorado, that you said that the, the developer had indicated that the, it was, it was a private street and they should be able to choose where the front or the back of the property is. Are all the streets in here private or are they city streets?
I guess. They are, as they were presented in their application packet, internal driveways. They are not to be dedicated to the public in any way and don't generally necessarily meet the city condition or requirements of private streets. And so if they, if you find that interpretation valid, there needs to be some revisiting of what exactly the streets in this application are.
Well, wouldn't they be like common area, private common area, and like a condo association there for their maintenance?
It would be up to maintenance of the.
I thought that was kind of what they had in there. They might have said private street, but it would be basically private property as a common area for the, let's say, association, right?
It is, it is a eternal debate of the planning and zoning world of what's, or the line between driveway and private street is. And it appears that they are trying to treat it as a driveway in certain aspects and private street in other aspects, regarding the location of the front doors of these houses.
Well, I'm sorry, the, the, one of the reasons for me asking the question is, is that we just approved and now they're, they're very much under construction, a project over near Shore Lodge. And it appears to me that most of the northern homes in that development are not facing the street. They're facing an internal drives. What's the difference?
That's a good example, Scott. I'm very familiar, you're talking about the Whitetail property?
No, this would be the property right across from Legacy or the park.
Oh.
The roadie park. Remember, they have, they coming in off a forest.
Absolutely. Another good example.
Basically, they turn around in there and the ones, they utilize the view of the lake, but they're all.
Yeah.
Kind of that setup. Have them.
It's pretty private.
Yeah, so I guess, I guess that's where, I mean, I'm not saying one's right or one's wrong, but what's the difference?
They labeled that street as a private street. It's running horse.
So it's a, it's a, you mean, it's just what they labeled it?
No, there, there are design standards for private streets that generally conform with city streets in the event that they should ever become public for whatever reason. They have at least been designed in such a way that we were fine with acceptable. This, we have no evidence that any of that has been done.
So this property would have a Colorado address, correct? It would not have a private street address?
I, yes, I would imagine. They've not labeled any private streets.
Good.
I'm just curious, so with the deed restricted housing aspect involved here, and we're considering these private drives technically in this discussion, like how does snow removal get handled? Like, I must, I mean, the association would pay for those kind of maintenance things, but does the deed restricted housing have to absorb that? I'm just like curious about how affordable, I don't know, just those additional costs that may.
That would be included in our budget. We've already budgeted for street, snow, this is Todd, sorry, and we've budgeted for, for that, it would be included in their rents. So there wouldn't be another surcharge, it would just be a flat fee rent and they would have snow removal included.
Okay.
These aren't fee simple.
I did want to point out on, on, and I know it's staff's turn to talk, but on six, seven, and eight, we're, we're talking about those, flipping them around so that their entrance is facing Colorado and leaving the parking off the private street, like somebody else mentioned, it, it does create a safety hazard because people are parking now on the back, the rear of the home and walking around to the front. And then the city's comments was to add additional walkways down from Colorado up to each entrance. And that is more than a twenty percent grade, which we should be exempt due to that alone. Brian?
To be clear, it is currently not a twenty percent grade. It is about.
Proposed.
Forty feet deep. Yes. So they are proposing to create a twenty percent grade, which the owner's use of the land does not create a hardship.
It would be an extended walkway to get to the pavement. Because you got just to the boundary of the property and you can see the.
And they are proposing to construct a pedestrian pathway. They may choose to connect those front door walkways to that pathway short of the street.
No, that's not what we proposed. On the one PZ drawing that we provided you on page one eighty six, that shows that this is a walkway for all of the tenants to get access down to Colorado.
Correct. What I'm saying is that you could tie into that walkway prior to meeting the street.
Again, all the parking is on the south end and you're creating a dangerous, in my opinion, a dangerous situation where people have to walk around their home and, you know, if you've got weather and ice and snow on the ground, it could cause some, some problems with that.
Understood, but people parking on the driveway would have to walk in snow regardless. And redesigning the house layouts could pretty easily remedy this challenge with a side door.
Okay, commissioners, any other questions or points of sort of concern before we do Okay. I am going to open the public hearing for this project, which is CUP twenty one oh one, design review twenty one thirteen at four twenty eight Colorado Street. If you'd like to speak about this project or make comments, now is the time to do so. If you're on the phone and you're muted, you have to unmute yourself for us to hear you and you, to do that, you hit star six. Sometimes there's a little bit of a delay, so just wait for us to, to hear your audio before you start talking. We do have one person present with us, so we'll go ahead and start with him too, sorry. And then we will move to the phones, so.
Hi, thank you. My name is Larry Swan and I live directly across the street at four twenty one Colorado Street of the, the portion towards Sampson that you've been discussing. So I'm, I'm a house directly across the street, lived there since nineteen seventy three. And then before that, I lived just up the street on, on the other side. So I'm very, very familiar with Colorado Street and the potential development, and we know it's a gift living that long to have it undeveloped. As residents there for a long time, it's, you know, a gift to have had it in, undeveloped for so long, but we understand change. I would just urge the commissioners right now with the questions that are yet unanswered that I still feel is premature to vote this as a further go ahead property at this meeting. I think there's enough questions with the amount of, if you want to call it the amount of trees being removed, but the, the Colorado Street situation to me is the, is the number one. Living there for so long, I've seen the change and that street is commissioned by, and so is well versed with and well known, is way off. My property as designated and platted, part of it's been surveyed, my pin from the front of my property is eleven feet on Colorado Street and that's where the pins are. Everybody up and down there. So, you know, in a sense, the city plowing snow and knocking my trees down and breaking limbs off my trees is already a problem. The street's narrow, you get down towards Growler and Third Street Motel on almost any given day now. And winter, it's snowmobile trailers, in the summer, it's boats and stuff. Today, I had to wait, I had people in front of my house, and I'm down at the end toward Sampson, waiting for the, for the vehicles at the other end, the large vehicles with them to clear so they could get to Third Street. And that's becoming more and more common. So the deal with Colorado Street to me, in light, in light with, of this project is critical. That street can't be really widened. We've already, you already canceled the left turn lane down by Fog Lifter because people can't get on left. You can't get on left at Colorado Street, not quite as often as down there, but pretty much the same thing. A left turn lane will be eventually just have to be closed off because people can't get on there. Would you add fifty plus cars coming out of here, back to Colorado and trying to get to Third Street to go to work? Or coming around Sampson and going over to May Hardware to try to get on? No difference. The amount of traffic flow that's going to increase on Colorado Street will be a, in violation of a CUP and impacting the local neighborhood. So I would urge you as, as commissioners to understand the project and the need. I've lived here long enough, I've talked to service people just today, restaurant owners who are saying they're begging for affordable housing so they can run longer shifts, keep their people working. We see restaurants already closing down, minimal hours because they can't get extra shifts. I do understand that and I'm community and civic minded. But I just think this is premature until the developer gets their act a little bit more together on how they're really going to do this. Driveway access, I'm glad you mentioned that, would be ridiculous going onto Colorado Street, and it doesn't look like that would happen. Walls, we're already knocking, we're already knocking down facilities plowing snow on Colorado Street. So I just urge you to go slow and thank you for your time and the developers too. They've responded when I've asked for, if they're on the phone, I thank them for the communication, they've been very upfront. So thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioners, thank you very much. I'd just like to reiterate what Larry Swan has said. Excuse me, my name is Brent Johnson. I live at two, three, four Ernesto Street, Rio Vista Boulevard, subdivision number five. And my concern is not only what Larry has said, but for the city in general. And Mr. Lyons, thank you for your comments. I've, I've lived here all my life. I'm old enough to remember when that dump you referred to was in service. I was a kid and we would go out there with dad and the locals, that's where we put batteries, remote cars, et cetera. So I remember that. My father was born and raised here in McCall and my grandparents pioneered this McCall in nineteen oh seven, I believe. The city in general, as you folks address this project, the last one, twenty one oh eight, and excuse me for not getting here in time, but also on twenty one oh six, the health, safety, and welfare and the comprehensive plan all address the issues what you folks, the City of McCall and the. and the Pale Lake Sewer and Water District are having to deal with. The lagoon capacity, whatever limit that is, that has been a historic issue in McCall. I remember at least two times when the city of McCall has called for moratoriums on building permits, splitting lots like the previous, uh, proposal and, and additional, uh, homes and needing to use the sewer. I'm requesting that the, uh, the city council and the planning and zoning commission get together with the sewer district and now call for a moratorium on proposed developments that are coming up tonight and any previous proposal for housing, whatever form is, you know, these duplexes or single family dwellings, just say, we've got to stop any type of request coming in. It doesn't mean we're stopping development. And we do need housing. To me, uh, and reiterating what Larry said, Colorado Street is the only street that I use to avoid downtown because as we all know, it's bottlenecked with, you know, the pedestrians crossing. And yeah, Colorado Street is, you know, the only one I'm using adding to Larry's predicament. You know, I'm one of those, uh, users on that street. Uh, I'm requesting you guys, uh, call for a moratorium on development immediately. And the reason is for the health, safety and welfare of the, uh, community of this McCall. Do we know the density? What is the capacity of the day, the J ditch? The land application, the owners there? There were, if I recall correctly, originally when the city decided to go to land application, there were more people and more different properties at the time who had agreed, yeah, their, their property could, they entered into an agreement to use their property for land application for, uh, the affluent going out the ponds through the Jade, Jade ditch. Thanks very much. So what is the amount of capacity for the lagoons, Jade ditch, and, uh, property owners downstream? There was a, a threat of a lawsuit from one of the property owners, historically, this goes way back, uh, for the city, you know, was threatened with a lawsuit by one of the people that owned land down there because the city had violated the contract. Other people that were going to allow land application, pulled out of their contracts at the end of their contracts because the city was kind of, you know, not following and not following their agreement. There was a lawsuit, um, that the city got into and lost because of the contractor who had expanded the then, uh, lagoons. I'm about out of time, but folks, I, I agree. We need, um, housing, uh, you know, the housing for workers and all. Not in this place, please, or our other places isn't there. And then again, um, call for a moratorium because we're, you know, do we know the capacity? The Jade ditch, the lagoons for land applications? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, um, so we'll go to the phones. If anyone is on the line and would like to speak, um, during this public comment period, you are now welcome to do so. We'll try to allow time for that unmute process, which you need to hit star six if you're on mute and you would like to speak.
Well, uh, this is Mike Myers. Um, I live in, um, well, I live outside of McCall, but inside the impact area and, uh, as full-time residents. And my wife and I, we, we, uh, we know so many people in the city that are not able to get housing. You know, they work at a local restaurant or, uh, for local business and the, the issue is they just can't get any housing. And, um, so this project is, you know, it's, it's, I think it's one of the biggest projects, uh, that, that I'm aware of right now of trying to build some local housing. But building local housing in McCall is very, it, it is a hard needle to thread. You have, uh, sewer district improvements that need to be done. You have, um, uh, you know, you have the other concerns that people have raised up. Um, and, and you're competing with developers that, quite honestly, you could make a lot more money by taking this property and dividing it up and building four million dollar homes in it. That would be the most profitable thing to do with this property. But that is not going to help city of McCall and the people that live in the city of McCall. So, um, I would really encourage the, um, the commission to, um, look at this project and realize that, yeah, there are some things, it's not a million dollar house next year and stuff. But at the same time, it's compromises that are trying to make it very nice housing for local families, um, which is desperately needed in McCall. And it's a great location for it. It's close to downtown. It, it's just a great location for it.
Mr. Myers?
That's all I have.
Just to clarify, are you the same Mike Myers that is associated with this application?
I am associated with the application, just a partner. But you know, it, and I, I guess I will add just a little bit more. I mean, um, you know, there's been, we have worked on this plan very hard. We've been working on this plan for over a year. It's, it did not just take and just throw out these things and, and, uh, didn't, not put any thought into it. We have put thought into it of how to, how to address the snow, how to address the trees, how to address the neighbors, um, how to address, you know, like rental housing. One of the biggest issues is parking. And so how to address parking? Putting garages on them because garages are really important for quality of life up in McCall with the winter. So we haven't tried to address all those things, while at the same time, trying to come up with a project that where we can have rents that are affordable. You know, you could make a lot more money just renting it out to Airbnb, but that's not our goal. We want to make housing. But, you know, the rents, we have to keep the project cost to a point where the rent, rents will be affordable. And so it is a very tight needle to thread. So that, that's all of that.
Okay, is there anyone else who would like to speak? Who is on the phone?
Fallon, this is Scott Tunnel. I'm going to have to bow out at 6:15.
Okay.
Just wanted to remind you of that.
Okay, thanks, Scott.
You're welcome.
Okay, it's not sounding like we have any other, um, public comment. So at this point, um, would the representative for the applicant like to address some of the sort of comments that were made during this public comment session? Um, there were questions about traffic and I think-
I would like to, yeah.
Sure. Um, sorry, can, I just got a little, um, suggestion. Our, one of our commissioners has to step away at 6:15. Um, so I just want to get a few comments from him so we have a sense of where he is with the project before he goes. So I'll pause and then I'll come back. I apologize. Um, Scott Tunnel, do you have some comments about the project and sort of where you are in terms of your position at this point?
Uh, sure. I, I, I guess my biggest concern at, at the moment is the, uh, the traffic, the lack of a traffic study and, and what's going to happen, uh, Colorado and Third. Um, it looks to me like the, you know, the issues of, of, uh, tree removal and so on is something that we just at some point in time have to accept that if we're going to provide housing, uh, that's needed in this community, uh, then we are, are going to have to do that at the expense of some trees. Uh, I don't see that as a key thing. I think the artwork, I agree with Rob, with Robert's comments. The artwork on, on Colorado is, is, um, nonsensical to me. Uh, I think the, the plan itself is generally, uh, well-done. And, uh, however, I would not be willing to, uh, to, uh, make a, um, a vote tonight. Uh, I think, I think there's, I think there's enough- There's, there's enough- So, uh, I don't think I said any of those things, but, and I certainly wasn't singing. Uh, but at any rate, I, I guess all that to say, I would, uh, if I were not having to leave, I would, uh, probably ask that this be, um, you know, revisited the next month.
Okay, perfect. Thank you so much.
All right, thanks.
All right. Okay, so now we'll go back to the applicant and let you respond to the comments that were made during the public hearing. Um, and if you can kind of keep to the, the issues that were brought up, we will likely have some other questions for you once we close the public hearing, but, um, just for the sake of time, if we can stick to the issues that were brought up during the public hearing.
Absolutely, thank you. Um, Larry Swan brought up the, uh, right-of-way, um, along Colorado Street and that it is skewed and that his property pin is out 10 feet or so into that. I don't know how you would like us to address that. Um, that street was already there before we purchased the property. Um, in fact, the house that is in the cutout, um, near our entrance is actually out in the right-of-way. And again, that was done previously. Um, I assume it was permitted and maybe the setbacks weren't checked, but, um, there's definitely a few issues along Colorado Street. But aside from that, uh, our project would stay within the property lines and meet the setbacks that are required. Um, regarding Brent Johnson's, uh, he called for a moratorium on all building. I don't think that's reasonable. Um, that would be your guys' call, but you know, he's mentioning the infrastructure and that it's not, uh, designed for, you know, for the construction that needs to happen in McCall for, A, the families that need, uh, housing. And when I, when we've worked with the sewer district, we're actually having to, on our own dime, which is to the tune of over half a million dollars, replace sections of the sewer, um, along the highway to, to just get this, you know, like, they did a moratorium where we were supposed to have four units per acre. We're R4 and they pushed us back with their moratorium to one unit per acre. And then, um, to get to this basin B, uh, or category B, we actually, just to even build what we're zoned for, we actually have to go out and improve the sewer system, um, in the highway at our own cost. And we're willing to do that and we're trying to work with the sewer district, but that's additional cost of over half a million dollars, um, just so that we could build these, uh, these homes. So, um, I don't think that asking for a moratorium, uh, is reasonable, but you know, part of his thing is that the infrastructure's not there and we're actually helping repair it and put it in. So those are the two, um, that I'm aware of that I needed to respond to.
Thank you. Um, okay, I will go ahead and close the public hearing since we have gotten through everybody. Um, thoughts from the commission? Questions or direction?
Well, in principle, I'm, I'm not a huge fan of taking an R4 and turning it into a R8.
That's aggressive. I mean, I get it.
The way it was going commercial.
The way it was done.
Stepping it down, I didn't mean to interrupt, but if you look, I mean, obviously we didn't approve the other housing, but it was a R12 for the storage units up here or shipping containers.
We denied that.
I know we didn't approve that. That's why I say we didn't approve that.
Yeah, for a good reason.
Ultimately did get approved and it wasn't anywhere next to commercial. This does blend from commercial on its east or west boundary to four, uh, right now, so.
That's what's going toward the-
Yeah, the hotel right there.
Of course, because it's zoned that way.
Yeah.
That's typically highway frontage is, but-
Jumping out of nowhere to do-
So that, that's, that's my heartache and I, and I, I get it. I mean, with the, what the city has done with this, um, clever redefinition of spot zoning, um, it's there. It's to be used and this is a classic case of how it's to be used. The, uh, the one legitimate concern is access to Third. I have a challenge with that, with making sure that's done properly with left turn on to Third or call it Highway 55. The alignment of the street, who the heck knows? I mean, that's, I'm not even sure that's possible to get that one straight. Um, I am a fan, believe it or not, and I, I know Brian will say I'm, who thinks I'm crazy? Somebody think I'm crazy on this one. You can flip those three houses. If that's a big deal, how they look for Colorado, you can flip them and I can provide data and a great example in Eagle, not too far from our, uh, second home down there, how a developer's doing that right now in a place called Eagle Lakes. And it actually looks pretty cool. You just walk around the side or, or side, side load. It's a side load entry and it just takes away some of the blank look. The deal with the retaining walls, um, yeah, it's pretty stark. I wouldn't be in favor at all of, of art in there. I think, I think that's, that's a Band-Aid. Conifer plantings and deciduous plantings with some shrubs to, to dress it up and give it a different texture profile from the street to try to restore it to something looking a little more pleasant, I think would be a better option than, um, somebody's description of art. Because we've seen various interpretations of art. That, that, those are my thoughts. And, and I certainly don't think it's anywhere near ready for a, a motion for approval or denial. At the moment, there's a lot of homework to do on this thing.
My thoughts, a lot of them I've already expressed. I'll try to condense it. On those three units, there is a large distance between the street. So if they're worried about people looking up and there's going to be a large amount of trees and a large amount of distance, so I don't see, I mean, unless the developer's okay with it, but do anything that would, you know, create more cost at this point. As he mentioned, they're doing, you know, whatever the Pale Lake Sewer District is requiring to fix a certain amount to get those extra hookups.
Right.
And they do have different zoning and there are zones in town until the west stations are fixed or whatever. They're limiting one hookup to a commercial site. So he's fixing some of the previous existing problems that the city never, wasn't able to maintain at that time. So on those, and I mean, if they want to do the pathway, I think that's great for that, but I mean, I just, that extra cost there. I guess if the interior roads or however that layout is, needs to be addressed more with the city, if it's, whether it's, should be something set up as, let's say Aspen Village, for example. They have, that's all interior of their addressed, you know, by the unit. I guess we need maybe a little bit more clarification if it's, it's not technically a city road or a private road. It's common area. And I guess on the applicant, I don't know if we asked him on that. What his intent is basically common area though, correct? Yeah. And so-
Probably like Rivers bad. Rivers been kind of mini and see you'll have a mather address, but you have your-
Yeah, yeah, it's going to be basically the same in any condo project. I don't see the need for the greenhouse gas thing. I think that's a big cost.
Agree.
The, on the road study, I mean, basically the only thing we really have to go by is the state. Where was that at? The state said it didn't meet their standards. So what point, or what do we have in the code to ask for those standards? Or what, is there a level that- Or what, is there a level that qualifies for asking for that? Since it's not a state qualification or require, if it's below the state requirement.
I believe the state didn't ask for it since they're not doing, propose, there wouldn't be changes on 55. It would be a change on Colorado, which is the city street. So we're the ones asking for the study for like capacity, if a left turn lane is warranted.
Okay.
And just general distribution.
Okay, I'm sorry. I thought it read something that the state just said.
Oh, yeah, this, they did.
Said it didn't meet their standard, but their threshold was because it's not on the highway. Okay, all right, well. And then that, so there's no sets threshold that the city has other than they're just asking for it as a concern. Okay, yeah. Well, then in that case, I guess I'd be okay with that, too. Start that part. If there's anything else, I think I pretty much talked about. I think that was my main thing. So I guess kind of reported out clearly, we can't. Or nobody has thought of voting tonight. But if we can give, I guess, extra guidance to the applicant on some of these items, it'd be a benefit to know what they need to go more, what our concerns are and hopefully they're getting that.
To make it work, I mean.
Yeah.
Just digressing a little, a density of this nature, it does serve a common good and need. I serve on the hospital district board and I hear it every month. These aren't your $10 to $20 an hour restaurant workers. These are people making substantially more than that, three times more than that. They can't bring them up from Boise with a 30% cost of living adjustment because there's no place to live. They could take down six of these, the hospital could take down six or eight of those in a blink of an eye just to house people they need to come up to take care of as a hospital.
Yeah, so I, you know, I agree with that. And I think the city, until we get more stuff done on housing and go through the city council and those processes, really need to see where we can work with a developer, especially when it's this substantial. Yeah, it's a substantial change for that area and that property, but it's a substantial need and benefit to the community that may outweigh certain things. So we really have to take that into consideration, is my thoughts.
Right.
Anything from you, Commissioner Crone?
Nothing really new. I just definitely would agree with everything. I think we do need a traffic study. I, even as it is now, it's, I don't think I've ever been able to take a left turn without waiting at least 10 minutes. And I drive down that road quite often. I don't like spot zoning, not a fan of it. I get the need for it. I'm not comfortable voting this through at this point in time. I don't, I also think it would be highly irresponsible to force something without really studying the impact it has. Yeah, foliage, retain the wall, have that note. Screening, that's easy to do. Nothing. Yeah. There is nothing new.
Yeah. Okay, so the, yeah, it feels just kind of sneaky, like the deed restriction, the doubling. And I understand the intention and I think, I mean, if it was somewhere where it's not in the neighborhood that is R4 and, you know, great, like let's get these houses in. But in consideration of the neighborhood and, you know, I think it just, it doesn't feel quite right to me to be like, oh, yeah, we'll just double it. And, you know, it's like a bonus for them and that's, I don't know, that just doesn't feel good. I would love, we don't have a landscape like overlay for tree removal on this, do we? It's pretty much just.
I include one in the status.
But I don't remember if it was over the.
Yeah, I think it had.
Yeah, I can't remember.
Yeah, I saw those.
That was removal and keep?
Yeah, there was, well, yeah, the red and green.
Yeah, that was removal and replant. No, this is just removal.
Just removal, okay.
Yeah, I think green was with state or something.
Yeah.
But not the new trees coming in.
That.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So to me, that feels like a lot of red. And I understand they're maximizing space and that's what's required, but.
Majority of them look like they're in the excavation footprint of a structure, so it's not really optional.
So that, to me, leads me to question, like, what could they reduce, you know, the number of units and possibly help out in that zoning side and reduce the tree outtake? Traffic, yes, is going to be trouble. So I guess we need to give this applicant some direction on what we would like to see this next time. I would definitely love to see an actual landscape plan and what, you know, if this is the reality of where they're going, if they're moving forward with the basically R8 density. I would, I want to see like proposals for screening. I want to see retaining walls where they'll be in relation to the houses and the road.
Can I say something? We did provide a landscape plan.
Yeah.
I don't see it, but we did provide a landscape plan. And you mentioned something about being sneaky. You know, when we, when we asked the city, we wanted to have it rezoned R8 because we're interested in the multifamily. And both Michelle and Diane suggested the density bonusing. We were not trying to be sneaky.
No, 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 I'm not, I'm not saying you were being sneaky, just the whole concept of, and I fully understand the intention and how that process works. But for the neighborhood who has the assumption that they have a lot that is R4 across the street and then it's developed at an R8 capacity, you know, level, that to me is what I'm talking about, where they're not sitting in this meeting understanding that there's an actual legitimate process that you're going through. But so I apologize for using that word. But that's just kind of, I think, how people are going to take it if they don't understand the intricacies of the program.
Understood. We looked at putting a apartment building, that's what we typically build. And we felt that this fit more with McCall and it offered the three-bedroom, two-and-a-half-bath that McCall needs and not more container homes or more 800-square-foot apartments, but more of a family style, be able to raise your family, have all the amenities that you need. And that's why we went with these. And we actually did a two-story, there's a one-story version of this. We did the two-story to keep our footprint as small as possible. And we also laid this out as efficiently as we could on the site. I know there's a lot of talk about meandering roads and saving trees, but you have to choose between, you know, saving trees and providing housing. And I, this is, we've gone through this several times. This was the best scenario for us, a version of this even. But this is the best layout that provides some open space for them. The square footage homes that people need with the garages and the space and landscaping and the yards.
Something to keep in mind, too, I believe we did approve the density bonus concept. Moved it forward to the city. It's one of the things that came through, I think, with Diane over the winter or sometime. It seems like we.
I didn't realize, so we approved sneaky. It's the city being sneaky, not the developer.
Right. Some of that, there was some density bonuses inside of those code.
I recall talking about that, yeah.
There were some of those code rewrites that were done and that was kind of.
Yikes.
Well, and the wording is up to 50%.
Well, yes.
Right? So we're like, yeah, we're really taking advantage of it, which I, again, I understand the need to maximize.
Mike Myers, can I add a little bit? So we have looked at all sorts of different options. And the reality is, since this project has a burden, we're somewhere between $500,000 and $600,000 of improvements to the sewer main out on the highway. You cannot build 15 units in there and justify the expense of building those units. We can't make the rent afford them. So you, the reason we are trying to go with the 30 and 15 duplexes is, is that is the minimum that we can do to justify the expense of the project. And it is tight doing it even at that point. I mean, that's the problem. That's why people build million-dollar places here instead of people not building places where people that work here can afford. Is because you can put in a million-dollar home, four million-dollar homes and absorb that sewer project. But you can't put in, you know, 15 rentals and the project can't afford that burden. So there has to be some compromise. And we were not sneaky at all on this.
I'm going to pay for that comment.
By the city to do this. And we have been actively working with the city for over a year. We've gone through three planners on this project. We have done everything the city has asked and it keeps coming back with more requirements. The city will not have affordable housing if they keep burdening projects down to so many requirements. It's just a financial reality. I mean, we've been told by the sewer district that the city should bus people into work. I mean, that type of attitude is going to get McCall to be in Aspen or Sun Valley where nobody can live there. And city government needs to step up. And in addition to saying it's a priority, like the workforce housing, so they put in a workforce housing program. So it's a priority, but now we're getting pushed back for using it. You know, you can't have it both ways. The city put in that program, so we should, you know, it's not fair that we get pushed back for using it, especially when it was under advice from the city.
Okay.
That's all I have to say.
Um, thank you for your comments. Do understand though that we are representatives of the city, the community. We are here to vet things, make sure that what is coming through is not just in compliance with code, but also benefiting the community overall. And that's, that's the only reason we're sitting here this evening. So we appreciate your work and efforts for sure, but we can't just blanket, like, approve things. We'd have very short meetings if that was the case.
We are not asking for blanket approval.
No, I understand.
Every question the city has.
Okay, so what I need from the commission is a sense of the information you would like because it doesn't feel like we're at a point of approval. I don't feel like we're at a point of approval. So I need to know what we are requesting from this applicant for next month or whatever date in future to get us closer to a decision.
Can I ask, madam, if, can we go through the, and you can, we can go, is it possible we can go through the conditions that, conditions of approval? From those, we can kind of choose what you guys want to see.
Get trees down already.
Okay, yes.
Would that be possible?
So let's have Brian run through the current conditions of approval and then we can address any further information we'd like.
Do we have to split up the CUP and the design review up? Because they have their own conditions.
Well, and CUP is going to go to.
Oh, yeah.
And we're a design review. Just make it simpler. All right. To address one on the other.
I would recommend, meaning treating them as a single combined application is one is going to pretty heavily influence the other. So the first condition of approval is final engineering approval. That includes traffic impact study, retaining walls and getting construction easements from the neighbors if they are going to.
Brian, I was assuming you were going to go through each one. We're going to combine these all into one. Is that what you're suggesting? Because I have an issue with some of these requirements, just like somebody mentioned, you know, doing, I remember number five, the greenhouse gases.
What I am suggesting is to treat the conditional use permit and design review applications as a combined application rather than separating out, you need to do this for design review and you need to do this for conditional use permit.
Okay.
That's.
Go ahead, Brian.
Final engineering approval, proof of sewer connections. As they have stated, they have worked pretty heavily with sewer district and are making a lot of improvements. Complete traffic impact study is number three. Do whatever the traffic impact study says is number four. Greenhouse gas emissions. That was something that staff is interested in exploring and thought we could ask nicely.
We would like to ask to remove this condition.
Yes, that is correct.
I think, well, go ahead.
Right, tree protection management plan by a third-party licensed arborist. Rise site plan shows at least 167 trees retained on site. At least 24 of these trees shall be greater than 12 inches diameter base height. Plan to clearly identify significant trees that can be retained during construction and efforts necessary to ensure their survival through the construction process.
Can I comment on that? I would like to see if the city would have any leeway on the 167 trees, some kind of variance from that, because that means losing houses or homes and parking.
Can you just hold comments until we get through all of them, just so that we can?
There's a lot. I kind of think it would be better if we did address each one as we went, personally. Because then we're going to, I mean, there's a lot of information. I don't know. That's just my thoughts, because we can say, yep, that one's good, we don't have to come back to it. Or we can discuss it as we go, just thinking it might be clearer.
Okay.
If the rest of you think.
We should do that amongst us, not with the applicant, with the applicant participating in the conversation.
Yeah, I don't think, right.
Okay, that's fine.
So the applicant stays silent and we let count, staff present and we talk. Write a rise grading plan identifying the heights of all retaining walls. Any walls over 30 inches shall not be located within the required setback area. If required walls located adjacent to Colorado Street, it shall include public yard amenity. Write a number seven, number eight, to provide a revised site plan and building elevation showing all dwelling units adjacent to Colorado Street with the front door facing Colorado Street in accordance with McCall State Code 3.8.19C. Prior to the Friday, rise site plan showing a pedestrian pathway connection from the front door of all dwelling units adjacent to Colorado Street to the edge of the street. Write a rise site plan showing at least two short-term bicycle parking spaces located on style location shall be approved by staff. Replace the flame maple trees shown in the landscape plan with something from the native plants list. Provide approval from the post office on the use and location of their mailbox cluster. And a one-year, or a designer review shall lapse after one year.
Okay, so how do we feel about those?
I don't think the greenhouse gas issue is an issue, that study. I like what you said about the plant selection because you're right, that particular maple isn't a big hit up here in terms of survival and aesthetics and snow loading on the branches. I agree with your comments on the traffic impact and letting those brighter than us make that determination. The front door issue. If a sidewalk goes to Colorado, I would see that problematic, really problematic.
I wouldn't, I, I could, I would have a hard time supporting a sidewalk going to Colorado from that elevation change. It, it would encourage parking on Colorado, which is not desirable, I would imagine.
Especially at that corner.
Yeah.
There's a bad idea. Three different roads coming into that one section and it.
Yeah.
Even coming out, you kind of mirror up to the wider than is, cause there's mold right there, but anyway.
Do we have a rendering, sorry, I can't remember anything, so I'm gonna pardon me. Um, a rendering of what those facades look like currently?
Alright, well, guys, I submitted a design review and another document that looked very similar, and I put the wrong one, it's bagged. Stand by.
I have a question on the, I was looking for that, the tree thing on a third party. I don't think they've ever required a third party to come up with trees, and it usually the.
City Arborist.
Dealing with the applicant and they've been able to work it out, I mean, I don't know.
I found that language on another application, I want to say it was Running Horse, actually. So it has been done before. And I believe that is mostly to take a little bit of load off Kurt. So.
That's some questions with the applicant on that one, until we get to that point.
Front of the. That's the front, front.
Yes.
Rear hallway.
Are those doors coming out the garage? That's the garage over there?
Yes.
That'd be the back.
Mandors.
The wings is the mandor, okay.
That's an interesting place for a mandor. Why is it there? That's irrelevant, we don't even know.
You don't know.
I would say with that, with that elevation, um, more, more substantial trees in the, uh, in the terrace benches to, to break that up.
Well, there is, if you look at, you have to go back and forth.
Yeah.
That one with the showing the road and the green and red dots, let's say, like that one. You'll see how many trees are in between, that gives you a good idea.
That's what I'd like to get a sense of, right, in the next.
You can get an idea, and that's just the substantial trees, there's a lot smaller ones mixed in.
Okay.
And maybe there's, could be some more if they did landscaping, I don't know, in the landscaping plan, if they add some more, but even as it sits, there's gonna be, cause they're not touching any of those, oops. So you kind of see.
Those are the remaining.
All the green ones, there's a pretty good filter of just the larger ones and the green dots.
Brian, can you zoom a couple more, you can't really see the color from.
There you go.
And those are substantial height.
Fourteen, sixteen, eighteen, twenty, twenty. There's twenty-five or so, and that's just the big ones.
Those are conifers.
Whatever that is, yeah.
Big, yeah.
And there's lots of smaller ones in there as well, so I, there's a fair amount of screening between the road.
Yeah.
Currently, and I'd say, I don't know if the landscaping plan has any additional in there or not, I mean, if they do the retaining wall, that, that's gonna take out some, but. Only other thing I could see on it, well, I guess.
So, yeah, the, is the retaining wall considered in this?
Notice there's, there's two different plans.
We're gonna lose a lot of those trees if there's a retaining wall.
I think there's, there's two, the middle one and the right one aren't sticking out as far as the left one, as far as the building up. Smaller, oh, okay, see, there, it looks like.
Yeah, there's some.
They have a small car garage, so I think we were looking at the double car garage one on the back plan. Only one of those like that would be facing the street. The other ones aren't gonna be as much of a white wall. See where I'm talking? Only have one on the street that would have that particular back plan.
Yeah. Right, cause you'd have no mandor, other than to a part of the house.
Yeah. Looks like they do have doors on them.
And so this is, is.
Okay.
Hexagons are existing trees with their diamers shown. And then landscaping.
So on this, where's the retaining wall going?
Uh, it would generally be in that crosshatched portion. It's a little hard to tell, cause they're not given us. Bated plants.
How's that gonna butt up to the property next to it?
There's gonna be a retaining wall here on this western boundary. And then I think it's gonna reduce our grading at the edge there a little bit.
So that's, that's the type of detail that would really be helpful next round is to be crystal clear what, what that is.
Does the one site plan have that, it seemed like I saw some, or is that just elevation change? And there was one site plan that seemed like it had.
Yeah.
Appeared to be some of the retaining wall on there.
There's thirteen.
A two-step, okay, so.
That gets you about sixty inches, si- sixty inches high.
Is that a retaining wall they came up with or the city wanted?
We had concerns with their original grading plan, which was more or less a steep hill off the edge. Um, and so we requested some modifications and there's.
Okay, um, I kind of lost where we were. So any additional conditions or any other adjustments to the conditions as stated?
So we're basically, we're not in favor of item nine, as far as the pedestrian pathway from the front door of all of those three or you, or six.
It doesn't really.
To the straight.
I mean, I figured have the one, obviously you can get there, but yeah, cause if you have parking in that area, it's gonna be a manor.
I definitely want, if that's the case, if it's going to be sort of a, that feeling that it's a fully separate little neighborhood, so to speak. I definitely want to see significant screening. Whether it's what's there or what's replaced, um, just so that it doesn't feel. Yeah.
Stark.
Stark, yeah.
Contrived.
Some texture. Trust.
And one thing that was sent to us earlier today, some of the responses, I guess, on the thing, they're asking for a two-year, I mean, like he knows that approvals for the one-year and there's extensions possibly available, but can't do a two-year.
Right.
Well, and preemptively seems fun.
Yeah.
Like strange.
So just, we can't do a two-year, I mean, there's potential to come back and ask for an extension if you can, I mean, we do that all the time in different projects if they haven't cut as far as they hoped or ten feet of snow in the springs, load them down or something like that, so it's just not an option for us.
Right, agree.
But is that, I guess we talked to the applicant, does that help give you some guidance?
So, Robert, since you've got it in front of you, would you just run through, kind of just note the conditions that we are retaining or adjusting and retaining?
Okay, um, if I got this right, I think we're pretty good with conditions one through four, which includes still doing a traffic study, and then item four is related to the traffic study. We're pulling out item five with the greenhouse. Then item six, I guess, I don't, maybe some clarification, are we still wanting a third party? Or are we hoping that the staff can meet with them? I know it's, the applicant started to make a comment when we initially started talking about it, and he said, hold off, so I don't know. Want to get their thought at this point?
I don't, I mean, I feel like that's at the discretion of, like, if the city arborist is available to do that, that's one thing, but if it requires a third party, I, I don't know if I.
City arborist can make that decision.
Yeah.
If he needs help or not need help.
Yeah, I think.
That's how I'd like to see that one go together.
This is Mike Myers, is it okay for me to speak on that one?
Sure.
Um, you know, I think we would prefer to stick with the city arborist if we can and get through this. If we hire an outside company, that's just another, you know, fifty or a hundred thousand dollars that gets buried in this project and making it even more difficult. You know, I think we can work through these issues with the arborist, we've been working with him for six months on it, or longer, actually, I would say nine months. So I think we can get through that, but, you know, bringing in an outside consultant, which we have to pay for, it's just another huge burden on this project, which is gonna make it really difficult.
I can see his point on that hand, trying to get somebody lined up. I mean, we've got an arborist for a reason, so I think we should utilize the services of the city. I mean, I know he's swamped, I know you are, and staff is.
Or, at least staff's agreeable with that.
Okay, staff's agreeable, so I'd revise that to, that they would work with the city.
City arborist, okay.
And we're, okay, so then on item seven, I guess we still want some more information on the retaining walls, but we're not wanting, we're not necessarily requiring public art.
Right.
Right.
Maybe some more details on the wall and some landscape in the wall and some better visuals on that.
Natural screen.
But we're not really gonna push for the public art part of it now.
No, no.
We, we can do that, we can provide elevations from Colorado Street that show the plantings. And, um, with additional plantings for screenings for you guys, with, it'll include the retaining wall and the split rail fence and a, and a walkway down to Colorado. Would that be acceptable?
That would be great.
And then item eight, as far as the elevation showing the front door facing Colorado, I don't know if we ever really, you said there's options, there's kind of a layout, we're trying to keep, they're not, they are trying to keep.
Yeah, the, the options.
Kind of me with the site, I don't know.
The options I mentioned are not applicable, once I saw the, the rear of those houses and the floor. That doggone hot.
Yeah, so I think we can basically take out number nine. Asking for those doors to come off that other side. Sure. I think we're fine with the bicycle thing, I think they need to have something like that with that many. We're gonna get, yeah, discussion, they don't want the flame, flame maples, so that stays.
And Kurt, Kurt will know those things.
Yeah, yeah, so that's part of the arborist thing, yeah.
That was a bad decision.
The post office is gonna give whatever the post office is gonna allow. And we can't do any more than one year on our application, they can file for an extension if need at that point, so that's not changing.
Sure.
I think that covers kind of what our thoughts are and, and, you know, sort of instructions to staff and hopefully some instructions and guidance to the applicant.
Yeah, no, that was, that was awesome, thank you all, I really appreciate it, and we will start working on this stuff right away.
Okay.
So, then we didn't.
Yeah, Brian, do you, do you feel comfortable kind of with that? We ran through in terms of.
I've heard it three times, I'll learn.
Okay.
Make a motion, we continue the application until the next meeting and then as an open public meeting or is it?
So I closed the public hearing, so we could reopen it and continue it.
I don't know, these items seem like pretty basic items, do we reopen it or not? I don't, I don't have, I don't care. I think we should probably keep it open to.
I would feel like I probably would.
Yeah.
With the keep, with, we have open to a public.
I just need a motion to open the public hearing. And then.
There we go.
Okay, um, we will, it has been moved and seconded to open, reopen the public hearing for this application at four twenty-eight Colorado Street, all in favor?
Aye.
Alright.
Opposed? Okay, public hearing is open again, um, so now you can make your continuation.
Make a motion that we continue, because the application is continued to your next meeting, um, with the guidance that we've given staff and that.
Second.
Okay, it has been moved and seconded to continue CUP twenty-one oh one and design review twenty-one thirteen at four twenty-eight Colorado Street, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, do we need a five-minute break, is everybody, okay? Plowing? Rolling, okay. Um, I think. Oh, God, okay. Um, we will go on to design review twenty-one twenty-three, shoreline twenty-one oh six at East Side Drive Bridge. Brandon Keller of Keller Associates. Hello.
Hi, I'm Brandon Keller with Keller Associates, one thirty-one, Southwest Fifth Avenue, Meridian, Idaho. I'm here with Jeff McFadden with Valley County Road and Bridge, and Scott Wood with LTAC, Funding Administrator for this bridge replacement project. The, uh, I think in the packet, I believe we showed some other public involvement that we've done previously with some slides showing sort of a background of what the project is and what it entails. But it is a replacement of the existing bridge, the existing bridge is a two-span bridge. You know, built over fifty years ago or thereabouts, and we're replacing it with a single-span bridge, a little longer and, and wider. It will be, uh, allow two cars or two, two lengths of traffic at times. And some pedestrian access on the sides, and there, there'll also be a little bit of aesthetic. We did have some other public involvement previous to this, and we had discussions with, uh, Ponderosa State Park, and they provided feedback and comments, and, and there will be some form line concrete on the exposed, like wing walls and some of the abutments. But that's a little background on it, and I'm happy to answer any questions or comments that you guys have.
I thought the proposal you put together in that packet was really good. Appreciate it. The style is comprehensive as you could ever ask for.
Thank you.
Yeah.
No questions? Okay, we'll have you sit down and get staff report, thank you.
Okay, this, uh, is a little bit of a unique application, as it is a bridge and most of our code is involving occupiable buildings and whatnot, uh, so there's really not a ton of design review regulation on it. Um, it, as he said, is gonna be a slight aesthetic improvement in our opinion, because they're gonna do some facade, some concrete stone wall appearance facade, um, and it's only gonna be a single span instead of a two-span bridge, so if you're out paddle boarding or kayaking, you won't have a pier underneath it. So that is all I have, staff stand for questions.
Okay. Questions? Okay, um, this is a public hearing, so we'll open the floor to anyone who'd like to speak about this item. Um, if you're on the phone and you want to comment, remember you have to unmute yourself by hitting star six, and there can be a little bit of a delay. So I'll allow for time for public comment. Okay, I'm thinking there's no public comment on this one, so we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Very comprehensive and detailed application, and I, I don't have many questions, it seems like they've dotted their i's and crossed their t's. It seems like they've dotted their eyes and crossed their teeth and I think it'll be a nice improvement. But any other-
You guys ready for a motion? If you want to talk about this, okay. I move that we approve Design Review 2123 and Shoreline 2106.
It's been moved and seconded to approve Design Review 2123 and Shoreline 2106, East Side Drive Bridge. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. Okay. Thanks for hanging in with us. All right, we'll move on to Design Review 2117 and Shoreline 2104 at 1774 Crescent Drive. Mr. Rumelay, are you with us?
Are you on? Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Oh, good.
Yeah, go ahead and tell us about this project.
Okay, so the project is an existing cabin and also a single-car garage, a freestanding single-car garage at, yeah, 1774 Crescent Drive. So obviously lakefront on Payette Lake. My, my favorite page maybe to describe what we're intending to do is sheet A2-4, if you can flip to that. One more, yep, A2 dash, look.
This is the updated plans.
Yeah, still A2-4, yep. So these, these three images right here, the top-left image is a model of the existing home and two-car garage and the large deck that's encroaching into the 50-foot setback. Then the top-right image is really what we're planning to kind of tear off. We're going to tear off the existing deck. We're going to cut the middle of the roof out and we're also going to rework the roof over the garage. And then the bottom is how we're intending to expand on the house to make it fit the owner's needs. The, yeah, this is, this is a, we're, we're still resolving the design actually even right now and I forwarded this to Brian just, just a few hours before the meeting. So I know there's, there are a lot of things to still review with him. If we go back to the lot coverage sheet, like A2-1, yeah, this one here. Again, you can see all the area that's kind of orangish is being removed. The, you know, again, cutting the deck off, bringing the home under the allowable lot coverage, reworking the driveways, trying to keep as many of those existing trees as possible on the site. Trying to think what else I guess maybe, oh, and then of course, down along the bottom of the page there, the site section, we are under any height limit measurements there. Yeah, and back of the, and also back of the 50-foot setback. So maybe, yeah, I'm not 100% sure how much more to add there, Brian.
Maybe we'll get staff report, Wayne, and then we can circle back if we need to.
Yes.
Do you mind giving us some?
So, Design Review is on Bayette Lake, hence the Shoreline Byron's Zone. It is pretty much 99.9% lot coverage, at least as previously calculated with the full deck. They're getting rid of the driveway and an existing garage and a couple other little things to be able to get that new attached garage constructed and still be under the lot coverage requirements. As far as the design of it, it pretty much matches the mountain modern sort of style. It's a low-slope, single-pitch roof off the lake. Yeah, they're removing the deck and planning on installing some new grass and landscaping beneath in the existing concrete area with a flagstone walkway to the lake.
Brian, we're, so with, with the changes from earlier today, we have a, we have a little bit of leeway to the lot coverage. So we're no longer at the 99% lot coverage, of allowable lot coverage.
Okay. Any questions for Brian or?
Can you summarize what changes you sent two hours ago or three, four hours ago now?
Okay, yeah, so the, the changes that came through, so we were, we were trying to, I mean, this whole time we've really been working with the existing home and the existing deck to keep that and then put the addition on the uphill side. And so the addition was really the, the three-car garage with the, the bunk room up above it. In, in working through various iterations and with, you know, sewer district requirements, you know, it has to be significantly attached to the home for a structure in order to get a restroom upstairs, a bathroom upstairs. So, yeah, basically what's changed since, so this was originally on the, on the agenda for June with a, the idea was you had the attached garage and then a set of stairs that went up independently of the house. That, you know, isn't really allowable through the sewer district's guidelines. And so we had to attach the house. In doing so, we also ended up going over the, by keeping the deck, by keeping that, we were, we were really trying to save the deck and, and like I said, save the deck and save the cabin and do this addition. In doing all of our iterations, we ended up going over the one-time 25% addition that is allowed on a non-conforming cabin. And so in order to come into conformity, we're going to chop off that existing non-conforming deck and then rework that front edge of the, of the existing cabin in order to still have somewhat of a deck, but we're going to pull back behind the 50-foot setback. I know it's complic-, it's, it's complicated. We're pinched on lots of sides on this one.
Yes.
If you tab through some of the other images, Brian, you can start seeing in the building sections how we're staying away from, you know, we've got the, the two-to-one slope is the two-to-one side yard setback. In fact, if you, yeah, if you went to the next sheet, you can start seeing how those are really determining where we're allowed to build. And so we're, we're, obviously any of the new work needs to be in conformance with the side yard setbacks.
Okay. I will go ahead and open the public hearing for Design Review 2117, Shoreline 2104 at 1774 Crescent Drive. If you are on the phone, you need to hit star six to unmute yourself before we can hear you. So I'll allow a little time for that delay. Did we receive any written comment? Last call for public comment for this, this project at 1774 Crescent Drive. Okay, I will close the public hearing. So, Brian, the information received earlier resolves sort of the, the issues that were kind of lingering a little bit.
Yes, they were included as conditions of approval. I would recommend leaving them as such.
Sure.
So that I can actually take a look at this.
Good, yeah.
I believe it.
You don't anticipate any new conditions based on what you said?
I don't.
Are we discussing now?
Yeah.
I don't see any issues with this one.
I think they're removing the non-conformity.
Cleans it up.
Yeah, yeah, takes the non-conformity, throws it out.
And appreciated that it, you know, they did what they, what the, the intention of that remodel of an existing structure and yet I appreciate that they are kind of following those guidelines because I know that some projects haven't, so.
Yeah. I think it's an improvement. Any further discussion? With that, I move we approve Design Review 2117 and Shoreline 2104.
Okay. With conditions as stated.
With conditions.
Thank you. Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve Design Review 2117 and Shoreline 2104 with conditions as stated. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passed.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. On to Design Review 2126 and Scenic Route 2112 at 1702 Pine Circle. Troy Latchek of Land and Architecture for Jake Tucker. Are you with us on the phone?
This is Jake Tucker. I'm here.
Okay. If you just will state your name and address for the record and then tell us about your project.
Yeah, Jake Tucker, 505 East Park Center Boulevard, Boise, Idaho, 83706. I'm building a 2017 square, 2017 square foot cabin at 1702 Pine Circle in Timberloss Two subdivision. It's a single-family home. My parents currently are located just down the street at 1022 Evergreen and we're just looking for a place to build and have the opportunity to host the whole family. And I'm also excited for the opportunity to build my own place. About it.
Okay. Brian, would you like to give staff report?
Yeah.
So this is within 150 feet of Lake Creek Road, hence the Design Review and Scenic Route rule. As far as code goes, it's pretty straightforward. If you really zoom in here, this corner is within the five-foot side yard setback on the eaves. I'm pretty confident that they have enough room to widdle it around on the lot to fit that in. So there's a conditional rule on that. It is a little bit of an unusually shaped lot and the front of the house kind of faces the neighbors, which is a bit odd, but it meets code requirements.
Could you pull up the elevation plan with the front there? I believe I had a question on this one.
The, the rendering doesn't quite match the building elevation.
Yeah. So I got a question for the applicant. Or, you know, I guess with this age, with your roof design and your, your roofing is metal?
Correct.
Are you aware of the snow that's going to come in front of your garage and your doors on all sides?
Yes, correct.
And you don't have anything to hold the snow up there? You're just going to let it?
I have in plants, a heated driveway and entry to help minimize the impact of the snow to be able to get in to the property during the winter. I've been going up to McCall my whole life and understand the snow impact up there. We also have a pretty large snow storage section along, I believe that's Pine Circle there to accommodate for any additional snow storage that's needed.
All right.
Wouldn't be OSHA approved.
I, yeah. I don't know, I just-
No, I see what you see.
Because you, I mean, we're looking at some issues with snow. That front door, you got the main roof line, that other gable roof line coming down dumping on you. Pretty much all your doors could get buried in the snow. And it just-
That's, that's why I have that heated driveway and, and front entry is to hopefully mitigate that impact. Obviously, I'm going to have snow removal services during the winter time taking care of it. I'm a resident here in Boise and, you know, I'm an avid skier, a brandage and have a season pass. So it's not like it's going to be not taken care of in the winter time.
Go when it's heated.
It's the release off the roof, the safety hazard, the release.
Like a heated driveway, assuming it's paved.
Free thaw. It thaws, then it freezes, turns to ice. Because the ground's frozen.
Go, this is going to stay put.
Without significant slope and heated drainage, yeah.
Yeah.
You have a ski. I've seen this before.
Yeah, power goes out one night, maybe never going to catch up with it. Boy, I don't know what kind of stuff we have within our code for that other than severe warnings.
We can't, no, we, we don't have any.
I guess we really don't have much to say on that, but I would strongly encourage considering whether you build a roof stouter and, and do some snow cleats or something to retain the snow above the garage door, the entry doors, that upper, you know, gable limb that's going to drop down right above that. One release, take somebody out.
Okay, yeah, I'll definitely take in consideration some snow cleats.
Beef up the framing of the roof and, and hold that snow up there. I think you would be well benefited in the future.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. This is also a public hearing, so I'll open the floor to anyone who'd like to speak about this item. We are at 1702 Pine Circle. And if you are on the phone and you need to unmute yourself, you hit star six. It'll take a little, few seconds to, for us to hear you. So I'll allow some time. Okay, I don't hear anybody, so I will go ahead and close the public hearing. As far as code goes, it seems like it's meeting things, but yeah, interesting. Architectural choices.
It's not really a subject for now, but it might be a conversation later in the code. Update it and consider some of that. Because we do it in commercial where that's something coming. I just see that front door, that top one coming down, all of a sudden it releases. Because you go in and shut the door behind you, you take a step out and hear it.
We have issues in my house with that.
They can run for it. Anyway, so hopefully.
The front door is setting a little ways off that.
It's setback a little way. Okay, it's hard to see the side, but anyway, that's in the future. But I mean, as far as code here, we cannot say. Everything else is pretty good.
I'm good.
That's what you hear in the snow hit you.
Anyone like to make motion?
Sure. I move we approve Design Review 2126 and Shoreline 2112. Were there any conditions?
Scenic Route.
Scenic Route, I'm sorry, Scenic Route 2112 with conditions as stated.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to approve Design Review 2126 and Scenic Route 2112. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. To Design Review 2127, Shoreline, Shoreline 2107 and Scenic Route 2113 at 2091 Lakeview Avenue. Michael Belt of Dwelling Design for Curt Racing in Marjorie Gatewood. Michael Belt of Dwelling Design for Kirk Racing and Marjorie Gatewood.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Okay, uh, so, yeah, I'm Michael Belt. Uh, I'm representing, uh, the Resics on this project. I live in Boise. My address is 2901 West Neff Street.
Okay.
So, this project basically has, has, uh, we, we've got three things that we're dealing with here. One, we have, we're, we're along Playa Lake, so we have the shoreline application. Uh, it's also, uh, really close to East Side Drive and so we're, we have the scenic route to consider. Uh, and then thirdly, we also are putting in accessory dwelling units over the garage. Um, this project, I would say, uh, i- it's a bit unique in that if you were to look at the site plan, uh, there's kind of a private drive that goes down, uh, off of Lakeview. And, and that's actually how you get down to these properties and access properties that are to the south of us, property that's to the north of us. Uh, the, the site itself, uh, does have its challenges, uh, being that it's got a pretty decent slope, um, sloping, uh, down towards the lake, uh, but also sloping southward. Um, and so, we've, we've kind of done our best to do everything we can to, uh, not only get the house to sort of conform with, with, uh, your requirements, but make it something that, that kind of is, is hugging the hillside as best we can. Um, and, uh, uh, yeah, with that, I, I, I don't really have anything else to add. Uh, what's in the packet here pretty much represents what we'd like to do.
Okay. Brian, would you like to give a staff report?
Yeah, so this one, like you mentioned, is just barely in the scenic route and just barely in the shoreline zone. And then he's planning on constructing a fairly large house with an accessory dwelling unit in between the two. Uh, it meets code after a lot of back and forth with the applicant, um, regarding building height and just kind of tearing it down so that it meets the, um, photography pretty well. Um, yeah, there are a few conditions left in there. Uh, but yeah, there's a large common lot between here and the lake that's gonna screen it fairly well. And the design and architecture of it seems fairly appealing to me. From the lake side, um, there were a lot of photos in the packet, photo renderings and things like that.
Questions on this one? Okay, this is a public hearing, so I'll open the floor to anyone who would like to speak about this item. Um, at 2091 Lakeview Avenue, uh, if you are on the phone and you need to unmute yourself, you need to hit star six and then, uh, we will be able to hear you.
Hello?
Yes.
Hi, my name is Kristen Sinclair and I'm part of the Brightwater Homeowners Association and serve on the Architectural Committee. Um, I just want to say that we've reviewed these plans as, um, they are, um, compared to our architectural, um, CCNRs. And, um, we have provided some direction to the, um, and no, they are working, um, with us to try and, and minim- minimize the destruction of, uh, the common area that they'll be going through to do this construction. Um, they are, um, trying to keep vegetation as much as possible, um, between their property and the common area. And, uh, just really working with the co- the, the, uh, homeowners to do this. We haven't had a, a, a home built in this homeowners association for a long time. I actually sit on lot four of the, um, area and so the, the trucks will be going right down our driveway. And so, we know that and we, we've had a lot of, um, good years without that happening. But the one thing I would want to point out is as you look at the renderings of the, um, project, um, from the lake, um, it, it's not representative of, and they, they have said this, but, um, I just wanna make sure that that's not representative of the way it will look from the lake, much closer to their homes. And it'll be farther back from, um, the common area of the lake. And we don't have plans to redo the beach area of that. So, I just wanna make sure that that's clear. And that's all I, all I really have. I don't know if, um, our HOA president is also on the line and if he has additional comments. I'm not sure.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to comment on this item? Last call for comment, and if you are muted, you need to hit star six so that we can hear you. Okay, it doesn't sound like, um, anyone else is coming forward. So, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Um, comments and concerns on this one?
I'm good.
Pretty straightforward.
Yeah.
Okay.
Oops, motion time? All right. So, I move, we, we approve Design Review 2127, Shoreline 2107, Scenic Route 2113 with conditions as stated.
It has been moved and seconded to approve Design Review 2127, Shoreline 2107 and Shoreline, Scenic Route, excuse me, 2113 at 2091 Lakeview Avenue. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. All right. Last one, kind of. Design Review 2108 at 204 Thula Street. Dan Brown.
I'm here.
Hello? Welcome. And if you can just state your name and address for the record.
I will. My name's Dan Brown. I'm with Chateau Log Homes. Uh, address is P.O. Box 422, Donley. And, uh, we're trying to build a, a two-story, 3,468-square-foot home. We made every effort to try and avoid plan review. We, we built under the 3,500-square-foot limit. We, um, we built under the 5,000-foot threshold, but I failed to understand that you counted the deck, the covered deck twice. So, here I am and see what we can do.
Okay. You wanna give a staff?
As the applicant has stated, uh, this is a, the only reason we're seeing it is because the deck over top of the covered patio area at, bumps it up above the 5,000-square-foot threshold. It's fairly straightforward, simple residential design. Um, they have provided architect stamped plans. Um, the only code issue that I have identified is that there's a retaining wall that is within a foot of the setback. It, um, slopes down pretty heavily and is less than 30 feet or 30 inches in that setback area. Um, the applicant has, uh, agreed to condition out, move it a little bit, so it's just completely out. So, that's the only issue I saw. But I'll say, any questions?
I have a question for you earlier, I don't know if it got resolved.
Oh, yes.
And we have that, you know, when we did the other one on Thula, there's that cone that you can't build on. So, I don't know if you got a response on that.
Um, yes, I, I, but I sent that along there.
I saw something.
I think.
It was gonna be a future report or future something.
Um, it was to get, to fill out the FAA form. Um, I can pull up the wording from Merckstein, um, so that you guys can have that to add a condition.
Okay, yeah.
I just found that out late this afternoon and we did file that report. I don't know where it goes from there.
Like, wait a minute, that's the airport, because there were those condenses we had to, kind of limits. I know you're gonna talk on that, towards that bypass area. And I think you're far enough down, hopefully it's not an issue for you, but.
Right. Well, the trees are three times higher than what the house is gonna be, so.
Okay.
But anyway, so, okay, that is gonna be.
Fill out and file Form 7460. Okay. It's a condition.
Okay. Um, this is also a public hearing, so I'll open the floor to anyone who'd like to comment. Uh, if you are on the phone, you have to hit star six to unmute yourself. I should have a sign. Right? No. Um, or banner or something. So, if you would like to, yeah, if you would like to comment on, um, 204 Thula Street, Design Review 2108, now is the time. I don't hear anyone, so we will go ahead and close the public hearing. Um, doesn't seem like there's a lot of discussion on this.
I'm good.
I'll make a motion. We approve Design Review 2108 with the added condition of, sounds like the applicant's already done, but we've had a condition of filing with the airport FAA required plan and going results of that planning, or, again, I don't know how we wanna word that. And we have to, not just file it, but it has to be.
Approved.
Accept.
Mm-hmm.
Be acceptable for what the FAA guidelines.
Second that.
Okay. It has been moved and seconded to approve Design Review 2108 with conditions as stated. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. Thank you. And a couple signs. Like?
Yes, we have to. This first one is over, um, next to Hometown Pizza. Um, it's the next little collection of shops over as you're going along Dynard. It's revised. Uh, at first, it started without the mountains and then we did an amended approval to squeeze the mountains on there. Um, but other than that, the color and the mounting and the lack of lighting proposed, as well as the design in general fit all the signage requirements. Um, and it was actually kind of fun to put together the words and the images. Become really good friends with the sign. It's like, wow, that's a great idea. So, it does fit according to the dimensions. Um, it was quite a bit bigger at first, but then we shrunk it and decided to drag past and see it up, actually, because I think it looks classy.
Yeah. It's nice to see something different.
And to the next one, we have Monkey Love signage. The first rendering, um, kind of died somewhere in the filing system, but it's a wood grain print of the same emblem, Monica's business name for the new version of the monkey store, Monkey Love. Uh, located on Lake Street. It is quite a bit below their signage allowance for the property. So, it fits all the standards. I think that the wood grain, it doesn't have a white background. It's gonna be also directly mounted on the, um, white finish there. So, it's not gonna look like that and it's not gonna cut the lamp post in half. So, it's just gonna be a nice brown mounted up there. And then the black one is more than eight feet above the pedestrian roadway. It doesn't go beyond the curb. It's just small. It's a doo, so.
Okay.
It's.
Nice. Anything else?
Thank you, motion adjourned.
Second that.
It has been seconded to adjourn, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Pass.
Yeah, I turned that a lot quicker than I thought we would. Looking at the attendants.
Yeah.
Yeah, cool.
Who's our other commissioner?